...the city and the learning process for all of us about what happens in how.
Here's the, here's the appeal.
Thank you. The yeas are twenty-one, the nays are twenty-seven. Therefore, the ruling of the chair was not sustained.
Okay.
And the resolution is open for discussion.
But here comes a new challenge.
Alderman Nateris' resolution.
Here, here comes a new challenge, however.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. On a point of clarification, simply want to have the record reflect that in spite of the fact that there was no motion to suspend the rules, which requires a two-thirds vote, that the chair has now been overruled and has had to declare that this matter is before the body. And I'm bringing to the President's attention that the kind of resolution that is before us right now was considered back on December twenty-eighth, nineteen-seventy-six. And on that occasion, there was specifically a motion made to suspend the rules for the temporary consideration of the resolution. And that motion on that day was made by Alderman Burke.
Well, this is a legal point.
I want the record to show that we are now deviating from the precedent which was established at that time. And once again, Mr. President, I would call on this body to permit the President to rule correctly that this matter is not officially before this body until there is a motion to suspend the rules, which has been sustained by a vote of two-thirds of the members of this body.
Now, that's to let the lawyers make some money. That's to preserve the legal argument.
I have already so ruled that the State Council has not sustained that ruling. Alderman Nateris?
As a matter of discussion and explanation, this declaration is a declaration, it is not an ordinance, it is not an order, it is not a resolution. It's a declaration that was taken and found on page three-hundred-and-twelve of the Illinois Revised Statutes. That's why we are presenting it today. If you read the contents of the declaration, it sets out simple rules of procedure within which to proceed. And therefore, since we had, it's before the body now, we have another chance to take a crack at it, I ask that it be passed by a roll call vote. I ask that it be passed by a roll call vote.
Alderman Bloom.
Mr. President, unless Alderman Evans has a response to that point, I would like to speak to the matter, but if Alderman Evans has a response.
I do have a response to the point, Mr. President.
And then I yield to Alderman Evans.
Alderman Evans. Mr. President, the rule that I referred to that requires the consideration that I suggested specifically includes all communication or proposition. A declaration is certainly a communication. I didn't call it an ordinance or a resolution. It is a communication, it is covered by the rules, and if they insist on proceeding in violation of the rules, Mr. President, once again, this matter will be back before us, except that it will be back after a ruling by the courts of this state.
Well, there we've got it on the floor now. It's certainly not a veiled threat any longer. We're talking about court, probably no matter which side wins tonight.
Alderman Bloom is recognized. Tomorrow morning, probably.
Alderman Bloom. Alderman Rhodey, point, what's your point, Mr. President?
Isn't it my understanding that you already told Alderman Evans and Alderman Nateris that your ruling wasn't sustained and this matter is before the floor for us to vote on? I think I heard you make that statement.
My ruling was sustained or not sustained?
It was not sustained, so that meant you made the statement that this matter is now before the body to be voted upon.
That's right.
Am I correct?
Yeah, whether it's properly before the body is another question.
Alderman.
That's first word Alderman Brad Rhodey.
I understand that, Alderman, the only, Alderman.
All right.
Me. Alderman, I didn't say, Alderman, I didn't say that you didn't have a right to point it out. I only, I only wanted to point out that he said that this matter is before the body to be voted upon.
Alderman Rhodey made his point. Alderman Bloom is recognized.
If this were Daley, he would have cut the mics off a long time ago.
Mr. President, members of the body, I'm the assumption that the declaration of Alderman Nateris is before the body. A declaration which I think Alderman Evans is correct is certainly within the purview of Rule Forty-One. I believe that the declaration is not as complete as it should be. This is a declaration which does more than any resolution that we adopt at every routine meeting of this city council. And by the way, those routine resolutions, a resolution to honor somebody's twenty-fifth wedding anniversary, that requires a two-thirds vote to consider, a resolution to honor a Cub Scout troop, which requires a two-thirds vote before we consider it, and of course, now without a two-thirds vote, we're deciding on the fate of the city of Chicago. The Chicago Bar Association and the Chicago Access Corporation are pleased to bring you this special cable cast of the recent mayoral election, courtesy of WMAQ TV. Stay tuned to Channel Nineteen for the Election Media Review, a live program that will follow this cable cast at six P.M. But since, Mr. President, but since, Mr. President, it is on the floor and we must proceed in an orderly manner, I believe that the declaration is insufficient. I believe that the declaration is insufficient because it does not give this body a chance to hear what the various candidates might have to say about the issue of leading the city. And therefore, for that purpose, Mr. President, I have a substitute declaration for consideration before the body. And this substitute declaration, ladies and gentlemen, is almost the same as the one that Alderman Nateris put forward, except that its principal deviation says as follows. It says after nominations are closed.
Well.
Let Alderman Bloom finish.
I have them.
It's evident, Dick, that these sides are well-prepared, isn't it?
I don't know if you've noticed or not. Mr. President, may I complete my presentation?
Do you want to wait till or after the copy?
Mr. President, I would like to indicate what the difference is between the substitute declaration and the one presented by Alderman Nateris. And as they are being delivered to the members of the body, they will see it themselves. But there is a paragraph four which says, "After nominations are closed, the city council shall recess and devolve into a committee of the whole to examine the candidates." And I move the adoption of the substitute.
Well. All right.
Well, that would accomplish what the Evans forces are looking for. It would mean a delay and some time for discussion.
Thank you very much.
Well, you noticed he did.
Before, before my colleagues do what they've done to me in the past, which is to lay this motion on the table, I think it's worth speaking to. It is very important for all of us to have a chance to hear the nominees. One of the charges, charges levied against all of us in this city council is that we have been precipitous. I know that all of us, all of my colleagues are exhausted, are beaten and brave. You've worked very, very hard, but the public has yet to go through anything like what we've been through. And the mayor's election in Chicago is the kind of election, even if it is by us, that must have the support of the people. It may be, it may very well be that these nominees can satisfy the questions and we can vote with clean conscience and strong heart here tonight. But it is nonetheless important that we do get the opportunity, a very important opportunity, so that we don't look, so that we don't look like we're rushing something through, so that we can address what everybody on the street has been saying all night, no deals. God knows, I've been around with all of you for the last few days, I know there haven't been any deals, but we have to be able to tell that to the public. We have to be able to show them that these people have ideas for Chicago, we have to be able to show them that they can in fact carry on programs of reform, of openness, of ethics, of schools, of budgetary process. We need to know that, and the public needs to know that if we're going to go back to our wards. The calls in my office were split between these two nominees, but everyone said, "I won't talk to you ever again if you vote for the other guy." They were all negative, and the reason they were all negative isn't because we don't have two quality nominees, we do. Decent people, caring people, brave people to go through this process. But nonetheless, the public doesn't know that. The public doesn't know Gene Sawyer, the public doesn't know Tim Evans, or anybody else who gets a chance, or anybody else who may be nominated. This is a vital provision, and I urge you not to lay this on the table, but on the contrary, to adopt it by a roll call vote.
Alderman Smith is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Smith is recognized.
I believe that we have a responsibility in this city to provide every citizen in this city an opportunity, to exemplify this body in the fullest. All day long, I have heard the human cries in the streets of Chicago, saying to us, "No backroom deals." I have heard the cries of Chicago, saying to us that we want the best possible representation possible. I believe that if we jettison that responsibility, we will have failed as public officials. I believe that the general public has a right to know what are the issues, who are the candidates, what are the platforms, what do they stand for? And I say to you tonight, don't deny the public that opportunity. Let the candidates present their platform, let the candidates speak to the issues, let the candidates answer the questions. Don't lay it on the table.
Alderman Rhodey, point of information.
What is the call before the body besides the declaration? There was a call, wasn't there? There was a call for a special meeting for the purpose of electing.
Was there a call, Alderman? Now we're on the substitute.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, let me get my point in. The call was to elect an acting mayor, am I correct? There was a petition that was filed before the city clerk, calling this meeting for the sole purpose of electing an acting mayor.
But what's the point of information?
Well, we don't have to worry about the declaration because that's already before the floor, and we can get at the business at hand. Whoever wants to present themselves before this body that wants to be nominated for the acting mayor, we can get right ahead with the business at hand without that declaration.
But there is presently a substitute on the floor.
I'm not withdrawing, and you already substituted, but the ideas that we had this here.
Alderman Stone is recognized. Alderman Stone.
I thank you. I join my colleague Alderman Smith in support of Alderman Bloom's substitute declaration. It is clear and has been clear for days that no one knows where anybody stands on issues, and yet we are rushing to judgment. I sent each of you, every declared candidate and everyone who might be a declared candidate, a statement asking for your position on issues. To this date, I have not received your answer. You compelled me to ask Alderman Verdoliak, who was to enter my name in nomination, to deny yourselves, the fifty members sitting in this room of knowing where anybody stands on issues, is to deny your constituency the knowledge of where we stand. You would, you would deny the city of Chicago knowledge of who its mayor will be for the next seventeen months? You do your constituency no favor. I ask you not to, I ask you, I ask you to accept the substitute, I ask you to allow us to examine the candidates, and I ask you to sit here until we have asked the candidates those questions tonight. It is too important. I'm not tired, I'm older than most of you, and I've been sitting, I got up at, I got up at five o'clock this morning, and I'll stay here till five o'clock tomorrow afternoon if we have to. But we're entitled to know where these candidates stand. Don't deny your constituency that knowledge.
Well, he's a Republican candidate for mayor. He announced this morning that he was going to be a candidate.
Alderman Davis is recognized. Alderman Davis is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to agree with my esteemed colleague from the Fiftieth Ward, with the exception of his reference to age. But I can tell you that we would indeed be doing ourselves and the city of Chicago a tremendous disservice. We live in a time when there is a tremendous need to know. There are some very difficult times in this country. Those of us who are charged with the responsibility of running this city have some very difficult decisions to make. We're at a point where we can decide the fate of Chicago. We can decide to go forward or we can decide to go backwards. If I'm going forward, I want to know who I'm riding with. If I'm going backwards, I want to know who's driving. I have a tremendous need. I wouldn't want the citizens of Chicago to jump into an automobile and not know whether or not the driver knew where the brakes were, or where the steering wheel, or where the clutch is, or when you need some gasoline. No, I think it would be a disservice. We would be doing ourselves a disservice not to hear from the candidates. And so I certainly agree with this substitute and commend the maker for presenting it to us. You've been recognized once.
Alderman Nateris.
President.
Alderman Nateris, would you just, a lot of people have been trying to speak, you spoke more than everyone. Don't keep saying I won't recognize you. Alderman Colleton is recognized.
Mr. President, I move to lay the substitute on the table. Not debatable.
Motion to lay on the table, roll call. To lay the substitute on the table, please take the call.
Well, all this substitute would do would adjourn the council into a committee as a whole and invite the candidates to take the stand, and members of the council would question them. It would delay the proceeding. I think, again, it's another delaying tactic. And here's the roll call on the motion to table that.
Burke.
And sometime tonight, we'll get to the main motion. And then we will still have to have the nominating process to see who is going to submit his or her name, file statements of candidacy. We don't know yet who's done that.
So this, this vote presumably is going to break about the same as the rest of them, unless there's some sentiment in the Sawyer camp, and we have heard some, to wait, to just wait it out.
Well, I think that Alderman Burke and his block probably has a lock on, on these kinds of votes at least.
Mel. Austin. Cutlers. Banks. Giles.
They want to, part of this is to wear them down, I think. This is the way legislative bodies often work.
Isandrea.
They.
And I, and I think Alderman Stone may be, may be closer to the truth than we'd like to admit right now. We might be, though. Five o'clock in the morning or tomorrow afternoon.
That's a very real possibility. Alderman Stone, as I said, you know, is running with Ed Verdoliak. He's a candidate for Recorder of Deeds this morning, declared himself a candidate for mayor, a Republican candidate for mayor in this particular council election, candidate for acting mayor, I should say. So there's some self-serving interest in that speech.
And Ed Verdoliak has indicated his brother Victor would nominate Alderman Stone, given the opportunity.
So.
Vote's being counted up, we'll hear this one. Remember, if this one is defeated, then we are back to Nateris's original declaration.
Well, maybe, unless they have some more, more motions.
The yeas are twenty-eight, the nays are twenty-one.
It's tabled.
The substitute amendment is tabled.
Now, you.
Verification, the roll call. Clerk, please take the roll, verification.
This is a verification, make sure everyone who answered the roll call is in fact in the chamber and did answer.
This is on the most of the table.
They'll go through it again. You noticed a lot of these people have prepared statements in front of them, so this is the way the council usually acts on matters like this. They all have their legal research, they all have their legal briefs in front of them, they all say exactly what's on those legal briefs because they want to preserve the legal argument for the courts, and they'll be in court if they elect a mayor tonight.
Burke. Carter.
Alderman Sawyer is sitting here very calmly, I might admit, taking all of this in stride. One would think that he's prepared to go through with it tonight.
Kellum.
And.
Sheehan.
Jones. I, I.
Jesse Evans. Garcia. We see him now.
I wonder if a court would overturn the election of a mayor. They might find it too tumultuous on the community.
Be pretty difficult, I would think it would be pretty difficult, as you indicate. So long as we've got twenty-six votes cast, it would seem to be the sense of the body.
Figaroa.
Although courts have overturned rulings, particularly with regard to Mayor Harold Washington's majority taking control of the city council, they supported the mayor, but again, he only had twenty-six votes. So they've got twenty-six votes now, and certainly more than that on some of these counts.
Well, Dick, we haven't seen less than twenty-five votes on any single motion yet, have we?
No, we haven't.
And in one case, we saw thirty votes.
And when we saw twenty-five, Alderman Sawyer wasn't voting.
That's true, and here's the count on this one.
The verification.
Twenty-eight yeas, twenty-one nays. The motion to table passes. Alderman Gutierrez.
I may be younger than some of my colleagues here, but I'm not used to what is happening here. So, Mr. Mayor, I would ask that my colleagues again consider the seriousness of the nature of the proposition that we are considering here tonight, and that we adjourn this meeting. I move to adjourn this meeting until Friday at two o'clock, as Alderman Henry suggested that we do.
Well, now there's a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Alderman Henry never made it before, he just asked if it was possible.
No, we had a ruling on the point of order, and now we add the official motion.
Rush. Tillman. Timothy Evans. Bloom. Sawyer. Beavers. Caldwell. Shaw. Verdoliak. Yules. Ferry. Madrick.
There's probably too much at stake to be defeated by parliamentary procedure.
Langford.
Legislative bodies quite often go through this, in Springfield they do it a lot, they wait until the last minute and throw everything at them.
Jones.
And that's how we get some.
Jesse Evans.
Well, in a very real way, in a very real way, it has been said by reformers in Chicago that one of the things Mayor Harold Washington accomplished was to make the Chicago City Council a legislative body, and we're seeing the evidence of that tonight.
Yeah, he said in a speech one time in Washington that, that he brought democracy to the Chicago City Council, that he took them out of the Kremlin and made them real representatives.
And this is democracy at work.
It is, I mean, it really is a great civics lesson. People are getting an eye of the kind of parliamentary maneuvering that legislative bodies go through. I can tell you, when Daley was mayor and when Belandick was mayor, there was not much opposition, they rubber stamped everything. You didn't see this kind of debate.
No microphones have been turned off, nobody's been told to shut up, nobody's been called to pipsqueak.
Right.
Not yet, anyway.
On the motion to adjourn, yeas twenty-one, nays twenty-seven, the motion is lost.
Okay.
No adjournment.
No adjournment.
Twenty-seven votes against adjourning.
Now.
The debate goes on. Now there will be some new motions.
What's next?
The motion, did you hear me? The motion to adjourn was defeated. Alderman Rush has the floor.
Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, we have a very, very serious matter before us.
Alderman Bobby Rush trying to speak and Alderman Ray Figaroa.
What's your point of order?
Problem is that Alderman, Alderman Rush is trying to speak, and unfortunately, we have all these individuals talking around him. Let's have a little bit of respect for our fellow Alderman.
Okay, thank you. It's not a point of order, but I will ask for respect from all of our colleagues. We don't have to agree on this, but let's get through it with an orderly process, so at least we can have that before us, and the audience will again be patient and quiet, show the necessary respect so they can move ahead. Alderman Rush has the floor.
Mr. President, again, we have a very, very serious matter in front of us tonight, and there have been all kinds of discussions going on all day. But, Mr. President, those discussions didn't take into account the issues that the people of Chicago want answers to before their representatives vote on the next mayor or the next, on the acting mayor for this city. Mr. President, we need to give the citizens of this city an opportunity to participate in a forum, to opportunity to come, hear their elected representatives, ask questions of nominees for this office, opportunity to get here, answers to those questions that are asked of the nominees to this office. Mr. President, we've, as long as I've been in the council, which has been a little over four and a half years, I've never known a matter that, of this magnitude, to come before the council that did not get referred to a committee so that it could be, could be heard and deliberations could take place on this particular matter. Mr. President, I move that this particular declaration be sent to the Rules Committee for a committee hearing.
Well, that's a motion. That has already been.
I think so.
That has already been recommended. Alderman, was this a motion to refer, or was this, would you please state it clearly? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Mr. President, I move that this particular declaration be channeled to the Finance Committee.
Well, that's a motion to refer to committee.
The key is, I'm understanding, are you asking it for it to be referred? Because that's the word I didn't hear. Are you asking for it to be referred?
He doesn't understand what they're saying to him. He needs to say specifically the word refer.
Mr. President.
Okay, yes, Alderman.
I ask that this particular matter be referred to the Finance Committee.
All right.
Yes, the motion is referred to Finance.
Yes.
This could, procedurally, we could see any number of motions made, defeated, way before we get to a nomination for an interim mayor, right?
I, I, there is no way of knowing how many motions they are going to make. As I said, they usually have legal briefs in front of them, or at least the motions in writing. Bobby Rush had that one in writing. I was just checking, looking at Alderman Danny Davis's desk in front of him. He has a stack of papers with five or ten, what apparently are motions that they plan to present. You know, they, they probably have worked this out in all of these meetings all day, they know exactly what they're going to do, they're going to keep making parliamentary moves, and, and the other side's going to keep voting them down until they finally get down to the one motion, and that is to throw this thing open for nominations. And we have no way of knowing how long we could go on just this parliamentary maneuvering tonight. Here's, here's another ruling. Well, no. Go ahead, Carol.
It appears if someone wanted to throw Tim Evans' name in denomination, that his forces don't have the necessary votes, right?
I don't think they do. I think Sawyer's people have enough votes to elect him. The question is how many votes. I've heard numbers ranging from twenty-seven to thirty-five.
All right, and of those, of those votes, twenty-seven to thirty-five, how many are hard and fast black votes? Do we know?
Well, I, I saw, I reported that there were ten signatures on the dotted line. Others have differed with me, the signatures that I was given said there were ten, and I'm not sure how many of them would remain with him tonight. I, Alderman Caldwell was on there, Alderman Shanitha Butler. Uh, I, Alderman Caldwell was on there, Alderman Shanitha Butler, uh, Alderman Anna Langford. Uh, it is not clear whether they have wavered or not.
Well, Shanitha Butler has indicated she'd just as soon wait. We were told directly by a couple of people that, uh, Alderman Caldwell had gone over to the, uh, to the Evans side, and that was confirmed both by an Evans person and by a Sawyer person, so that's one.
And he moved to adjourn earlier.
Yes, but Anna Langford seems to have stood fast, and I would guess at this point that Shanitha Butler is...
In the Sawyer's hands.
If she has to cast a ballot tonight, I would think she's gonna cast a ballot.
And, and, you know, we've been saying all along, there are some people who are willing to, to go along with Gene Sawyer, who were not on that list. I mean, you heard, uh, you heard Alderman Sheehan say earlier, he didn't plan to support any of them.
Thirty days, nineteen days. Motion is...
Well, they're back to thirty, uh, but this is a, this is a numbers game. We could go on like this. What I was saying is...
And let's remember that we could go through all kinds of motions, then get to the point where they have to nominate candidates and vote, and people could start abstaining, and you don't get them in power.
Well, I think they're getting angry. I think what, uh, there's some people here who believe that they had some promises. Some people were yelling at Danny Davis, saying, "You promised, you promised." Peter Carl pointed that out to me. Uh, I think that there were some promises made, and I think now that, uh, that there are, that there are delaying tactics going on.
Well, there's another vote on the floor now.
Well, this is another verification. Uh, but as I was saying earlier, Alderman, um...
But the council, look around at the council floor as well, Dick. It's starting to look more like a normal council meeting, with people pacing around, talking to each other again. When we first started all this, that was a very formal council gathering that you saw, very unusual, people in their seats. Uh, now, now as you start to see people milling around, it's beginning to look a little more normal.
Yeah, and, um, and, uh...
Ron, let's remember, for normal, it's one o'clock in the morning in Chicago. This is not a normal council meeting.
They've got nothing else to do. I mean, uh, uh, you know, I mean, they might, they might as well get it done tonight. That was their feeling, and, uh, and Gene Sawyer is, uh, the only one who can call this thing off, and, uh, he's over there conferring with, uh, Beavers and, uh, Shanitha Butler at the moment. Peter Carl.
You're absolutely right, Dick. When you were saying a little earlier that they have these proposals stacked up in front of them, Luis Gutierrez just made a motion to some friends over here in the gallery, saying that they're prepared to have, uh, proposals like this until the morning. So that's exactly what their game plan is, to, uh, have votes, roll calls, all through the night, if it takes it.
Well, we don't know what the other side is willing to do. You're right, Ed Smith has got a motion in his hand, uh, it looks like Luis Gutierrez has a motion in his hand. You know, at some point, though, David Orr is, is doing this thing, uh, by the book up here now. We thought, uh, he, he's kept his word, he hasn't permitted much chicanery, uh, but, you know, you would think at some point, they would start asking for leave to use the last favorable roll call. They haven't done that, uh, and of course, the other side probably would object. They're, they're bound and determined to stay here all night. As we were saying, Gene Sawyer is the only one, I think, at this point, who can call this thing off, and, uh, right now, he doesn't seem to be willing to do that.
Well, that is Alderman Shanitha Butler who's talking to him now, and she's one who said she would, uh, just as soon wait.
However, she also seemed to be a Sawyer rather than Evans supporter.
Absolutely.
And as long as they can't muster the votes to adjourn, this council's held hostage by that parliamentary problem.
Mr. President, in the interest of good government, in the interest of the people who have a right to have their voices heard, anyone who believes that the people's voice cannot be heard and does not have a right to be heard, there's a serious problem there. We're not living in the same time zone that we did thirty, forty years ago, Mr. President. I therefore move for an adjournment for Friday at ten o'clock a.m.
There's another motion to adjourn. I guess they could go...
Well, that may, that may be the strategy we see developing now, Dick.
I, I'm not...
Uh, motion, 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 then a motion to adjourn. A message that we can keep this going a long time if we want. When are you gonna take the adjournment?
Well, these things aren't debatable, these motions to adjourn, but I would think at some point, David Orr could also, could also say, "We've already heard that motion." But I think what he just did was, he moved to adjourn to a time specific that was different from the other motion to adjourn.
Well, it was Friday at ten instead of Friday at two.
Right, and I think that's what's going on. See, by changing the time every time, uh, they can make a new motion. So it isn't the same motion that they've already ruled on. And that's probably what's going on. You're right. Couple of motions, uh...
Motion to adjourn. See if you can grind somebody down and change a vote.
So how many are there? Twenty, twenty-two of them, or something like that? I guess they could go around all night, I don't know.
Dick, are, can we deduce from all of this that Sawyer hasn't given someone the go-ahead to open up the nomination process?
No, 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 no. I think that, uh, that he has...
I think it means that he has, he has indicated he's not withdrawing.
But at the same time, why haven't we heard somebody jump to his feet and say, "Let's get going and nominate somebody"?
Well, we can't get back to Nateras's original, uh, declaration. All of this is to avoid getting to Nateras's declaration.
Oh, you're right, you're right. I see, yeah, I see.
Yeah, they can't, uh, they're deadlocked, uh, on this until Sawyer and his allies decide whether or not they want to go through with it tonight. Bill Henry, you know, he told us he was gonna make the motion himself, uh, and then he, and he did try it, uh, uh, so maybe, maybe they're gonna wear him down a little bit tonight, but I can tell you this, that there are some of the Aldermen, uh, in the white block who are saying, and, and that we've, we've reported it a number of times, you go past tonight, it's gonna take you a while to elect a mayor, uh, because the community pressure is going to build, uh, and, uh, it's going to build not only on the candidates, it's going to build on the people who have to vote for the next mayor, and, uh, so they don't want to go past tonight. They, they want to try to get it done, get it over with. I figure, take the community pressure that, or the explosion that's going to happen in the community, get that out of the way, get it behind them. They're going to push and say, "We've got things to worry about. The budget is a major consideration."
They've completed the fifty wards now and are going back to check with some of the Aldermen who they couldn't hear responses from, and the clerk is about to turn around and report the results of this motion to adjourn.
So, um...
Watch the election of a mayor Saturday, February the twentieth, from ten-thirty a.m. until seven p.m., only on Channel Nineteen.
I, I, the, this, uh...
Here it is, Dick.
The motion to adjourn, twenty-one yays, twenty-seven nays. The motion is defeated.
Well, now, I want to tell you, that we've heard that twenty-seven number over and over and over again. They're trying to get the mic. They all have motions to make.
I'll bet they do.
Mr. President, President...
Dick, you know, the longer this business goes on, and the closer we get to Friday, either by reporting this continuously until then, or some adjournment...
I hope not.
...in between, does it seem to you that maybe we move away from Tim Evans as well as Gene Sawyer and into the field of a compromise?
Because we want to make sure that our constituents get an opportunity...
I think we could move away from both of them.
Let's hear what Alderman Smith had to say.
It's another motion.
And because we live under a U.S. Constitution that provides government for the people and by the people, I wish to, uh, have the clerk to read this amendment for the adoption in terms of procedures for election, election of an acting mayor.
Okay, it's another motion. Um, no, a motion to amend the Declaration of a Vacancy. Alderman Danny Davis and others are sitting here passing out these motions. Um, I don't know if there's any way to break this.
Well, let's hear this one. Maybe one of these might.
Is he presenting this as a substitute, or what? He didn't say...
It's an amendment, I believe.
I, I believe, I believe you have, if you have the clerk read it, I think it was, it's a... You can't re...
We have a declaration, we have an amendment.
It's an amendment.
He's amending the declaration. Hi, Mr. President? Mr. President, I move that it lie upon the table.
You're not recognized.
Ah, ah, here we go.
I move that it lie upon the table.
I know it's hard to hear each other. Let's try and be quiet again so we can hear each other. Alderman Smith, uh, no, not, I set...
Things apparently getting a little testy here on the council floor.
Yeah, David Orr's saying, "I didn't recognize you." Gosh, you can't do that. Um, but he had the microphone, and he had it open, and he got his motion out, and that all counts. Um, in the original fight with the twenty-nine, when Mayor Harold Washington, when they seized control of the council, uh, tapes, videotapes, recordings, news clips, were all subpoenaed. They were trying to...
Because all of this counts. It's not, it's not silliness, and it's not petty, and it's not a game. It all means something, and it all does count.
And a lot of the strategy here is to preserve what they call the record, to preserve a judicial account that will be arguable in court.
And, and they need the tapes, they need the proof.
I understood, Mr. Chairman, that you were gonna be fair and not get involved in this situation.
I am.
Right now, what I've been seeing for the last two hours is you recognizing people that stood up after certain people as to be recognized. You don't have to recognize people. Don't talk to me about politics, you're thirty.
Alderman, that's not a point of information. I am trying, uh, we're all out of order, let's ease up a bit. The point is...
You ruined your point anyway. You might as well go ahead and keep doing it. You made, you made yourself look bad already. You might as well...
Okay, will the clerk please read the amendment?
I hereby move to amend the procedures for the election of the acting mayor in the following respects.
Will we please, uh, quiet down so the clerk can be heard?
Here's the amendment.
At least twenty-four hours shall lapse between the close of nominations and the election for acting mayor, to allow the members of the city council to hear from their constituents and proceed with due deliberation on a matter of such great importance to the citizens of the city of Chicago.
To lay the amendment on the table, Mr. President.
Well, I guess they're determined to go through with this. We were talking about preserving these records earlier. Uh, they're, the, uh, Finance Committee are, are one, one of the Aldermen, I don't know which block, but apparently, it used to be the Finance Committee, they videotaped these proceedings, so they have their own camera here, they're rolling on everything that's happening. They're up in the balcony, and, uh, there's a court reporter present.
Caldwell.
Uh, so, they'll have all this down for the record, and, uh, I'm sure we're headed for court.
And the easiest way, I think, to explain why all of this happens, why there are parliamentary rules of order is, if there are more than two people in your family, you know, on occasion it's very difficult to get a decision made about certain things. Stick fifty people in a room together, give them all separate political interests, and you can imagine the chaos that would result. There are very specific rules that will on occasion seem like nitpicking, they may seem frivolous, they may seem foolish, but they are not. They are all intended to eventually move this body toward a conclusion, and that's what's happening. It won't move at my pace, or your pace, but it will move at the pace that is set by the body. That pace may be dictated sometimes by the minority, sometimes by the majority, but it will move inevitably toward a logical conclusion of some kind. A logical conclusion that may end up in court, but it'll move toward a conclusion.
Dick, I want to know what provision there is within these rules in this council for a filibuster, because I think that's about the only thing, I mean, in a sense, we have a parliamentary filibuster right now.
Well, I, I think that, uh, I think that they could probably, uh, set time limits, and I think there are time limits for speeches. They rarely enforce them over here, but they can set time limits. Uh, they could, uh, adopt rule-setting time limits for nominating and seconding speeches. Uh, then, then people will have an opportunity to explain their vote, that's part of the procedure too, and, uh, that could mean that fifty Aldermen, if they so choose, could stand up and explain why they were voting one way or another after listening to the nominating speeches. I mean, this is a long process.
That's certainly not out of the realm of possibility. All of these Aldermen know this proceeding is now being covered on television, and, uh, this is one very good way for them to all make their position clear in their wards, and if this moves toward a vote on a mayor, I fully expect that. I fully expect every single Alderman will have something to say about a vote if it has to be made this morning.
Well, I, I'm not sure, uh, that I agree with you, uh, in some respects. Most of them probably will, but I suspect that there are some members of, I guess what has to be called the Burke Block, because that's what it's developed into. They might just say, "Hey, let's get it over with. They've done it before. If they know they've got the votes, no reason to talk about it. If you got the votes, don't talk about it, do it."
Let's listen to this one.
Motion to lay on the table, the ayes have twenty-eight, the nays have twenty. Uh, the motion is successful.
So they have tabled that amendment. That one's gone, now we'll see what happens next.
You can, oh...
Alderman Davis is recognized.
Well, David Orr is now, it's now clear that David Orr is not going to recognize any of the members of the opposition block after his chair, after his ruling has been overturned, or after motions have been tabled. David Orr is going to recognize, apparently, the members of the Washington Coalition to make motions. That's what apparently is going on now. You can hear the yelling and shouting. Listen.
Now that, now that I think there is sufficient quiet in the room, Mr. President, I would move for a verification of that roll call.
Dick...
Yes.
David Orr had said with you, and had said earlier, that he would simply abide by where there was twenty-six votes. It would seem that there's some departure from that now.
He said more than that.
Verification, Mr. Chairman. So much noise was going on, I really couldn't hear. I really don't know what it was.
David Orr said more than that. He said he wasn't gonna permit any chicanery with this, uh, election.
I saw it faster to go through it.
He said it on city desk.
Well, it would seem that he's taken a position...
Mr. President, I can continue to make these points of order, I think it's counterproductive, but really, the, uh, request for the verification is not timely. Uh, we... I, I wish that we could get the cooperation of the members to try and have an orderly process.
Let's ask for the cooperation. Let's take this verification, but I, uh, will not rule for those unless there's some particular reason for them in the future.
There's, there's the answer.
Because I do believe that you can determine what is timely and what is not.
Well, that, that will be the end of the verification.
Okay, the clerk, please take the roll.
And, uh, it's, and he said that there would not be any chicanery with this election. He apparently is now recognizing members of the Washington Coalition to make their motions, even though other members of the city council are trying to get the floor. And, uh, and, uh, clearly, they're all on their feet yelling, and he has the opportunity to recognize who he wants to recognize, and he has turned repeatedly to Danny Davis, Luis Gutierrez, a number of the other Aldermen, for the purposes of making motions.
Well, it would be hard to imagine that anyone could sit in the mayor's chair in Chicago, even for a few days, without exercising some of the pleasures of that power.
Timothy Evans.
Well, uh, one has to wonder about, uh, his, his word after what he said, though, that, uh, he thought, what he also said was, he thought the Aldermen would have reached a consensus, uh, would have reached a consensus by the time, uh, this special meeting was called, and he, he expected to proceed with it, and...
We think there is a consensus there. The evidence would seem to indicate that the votes for Eugene Sawyer at this moment still exist. At least there's strong reason to believe that.
There's certainly reason to believe that there is a voting block in excess of twenty-five votes to be mustered on this floor.
A voting block that wants Eugene Sawyer to be mayor of the Aldermen.
And, uh, and, uh, Alderman Orr, by the way, was a part of the Washington Coalition, and, uh, and, uh, was a member of that, uh, so-called twenty-six that the mayor put together to gain control of the Chicago City Council.
And in terms of allegiance and, and loyalty, maybe we need to give Alderman David Orr some credit. Uh, it's reasonable to presume at some point, he had some conversation with Mayor Harold Washington about, uh, taking over power when he became vice mayor. There must have been at least a casual conversation about, uh, him saying, "I'll, I'll continue with, uh, with what you want to see accomplished."
I, I suspect it was more than a casual conversation, because Alderman Dick Mel because Alderman Dick Mel of the Thirty-third Ward used to be the vice mayor. Mel used to walk around the city council jokingly and say, "A heartbeat away, a heartbeat away." He used to joke about that. I mean, you know, he was a part of the Vedolli Act Twenty-Nine. But when Mayor Washington seized control, they promptly replaced Alderman Mel, despite every entreaty he made to Mayor Washington. He tried to keep his vice mayor's job. In fact, he kept the committee, I believe, but they would not leave him in the vice mayor's spot. They replaced him with Alderman David Orr. And of course, that's what you're seeing now. Mel would be the acting mayor if he had not been replaced earlier this year as acting, as vice mayor.
And theoretically, we would see a different group of people being regularly recognized on the floor if that were the case.
Well, I suspect he would probably emerge as the candidate for mayor. Or they might try not to hold any special election. Mel's up on, Mel is up on, Jerry? Mel is determined to be recognized.
I guess he is.
Mel, I mean, they're getting angry about this. It's funny, but it's not.
Right.
Order in the chambers, please. If I could ask the aldermen to take their seats, the audience to take their seats. We need some order in the council so we can proceed. We will all be recognized.
Question is, when?
We'll all be recognized, but we have to follow an orderly procedure. First, we have to read the verification. The ayes were twenty-eight, the nays were twenty. Alderman Isandras.
Well, here we go again.
Mr. President. In the interest... Mr. President.
I think the aldermen are the... Can we ask some order? Will aldermen please try and get to their chairs?
Well, he recognized Alderman Isandras in spite of Alderman Mel's little theatrics.
If the alderman will please...
They're trying to keep Mel from speaking for some reason or another. And...
Mr. President.
If the audience, please refrain. We all know there's a game going on. We want to simply go ahead. If the alderman...
We're seeing Alderman Terry Gabinski there in the foreground, saying he's lost all respect for the chair.
Believe you called the mayor a joke. He said, "You're in the game, you're a joke."
The majority votes will have their way. Let us proceed, Alderman Isandras has the floor.
In the interest of, in the interest of getting to the topic at hand, I'm gonna move the previous question.
There we go.
That's Nuteras's question, right?
Move the previous question. Clerk, please take the roll.
Well, that's probably the motion they wanted to try to avoid.
Rhodey. Rush. Rush. Tillman.
Let's see what happens on this roll call.
Timothy Evans.
People are trying to stop it here.
Sawyer.
Procedurally, can they stop it, Dick?
Beavers.
I can't hear you.
Please be quiet so I can hear the clerk. A motion for the previous question.
Procedurally, can they stop it? Isn't Isandras within his rights to do what he just did?
I, if they've moved the previous question, I assume that they... I don't know. I mean, I don't know if any other motions now take precedence or not, other than motions to adjourn, motions to recess, that kind of motion. So, I don't know, I don't know now what's going on. But I do want to try to get, I do want to try to get Dick Mel over here, if I can get Dick Mel over here, and see if we can talk with him. Because I want to see what kind of motion he was, he was trying to make. Alderman, Alderman Mel? And here he is, he's coming over to join us. I want to see, he says he can cast his vote even after he joins us. Alderman Mel? Alderman, if you'll tell us what, Alderman, what kind of motion he... Alderman Mel? He's waiting for his roll call vote. He wants to answer this roll call. Gabinski is being called.
Mel.
Okay, Alderman Mel, tell us, tell us what you're trying to do. Tell us what...
I'm trying to be fair. And I think that this man, who sits in this chair up there, who I praise for doing a good job, is doing a disservice to the Chicagoans, a disgrace. Alderman, Vice Mayor, Mayor Alderman Orr is a disgrace by not being fair. He's not calling, obviously, on any people that are attuned with Alderman Sawyer. He's deliberately trying to drag this on. They promised they'd keep us here all night. They dragged this on till they wore us down. It's dilatory, it's a fact, he's not fair. Exactly. They promised to be fair, and he's a joke.
Well, there is Alderman Mel, Alderman Gabinski, Alderman Gabinski.
An embarrassment that he sits in that chair. He doesn't belong in that chair. I vote aye.
Well...
Does not belong in that chair. He is an embarrassment as an interim mayor. He has lied to us. He has no longer any respect, any trust from any member of this body. He's been the mayor four days.
And that's, and Bobby Rush.
He's doing what he's supposed to do. He's being fair to everybody in this body. He's being fair to everybody in this body. He's calling on both sides. He has utmost respect of all the individuals in this body. I don't care what anybody says. He's doing what he's supposed to be doing.
But he hasn't called on any of the opposition to make any motions.
No, he has called on them. He's called on them, and they've spoken. Nuteras got up three or four times. That's why we're discussing the matter we're on right now. He has, he's been very fair to everybody.
Well, okay, so there's the argument. We still don't know what Alderman Mel was going to do. We suspect that he was gonna call for the question.
Now, where are we on that question, Dick?
I don't know. We were so busy.
The clerk, did you all hear?
Here we go.
It was thirty-one ayes, seventeen nays. The motion was successful.
Where on the question? I don't know, at this point.
The clerk will call the roll on the declaration.
Now, the adoption of...
Rhodey.
Here we go.
Let's listen to this one, Dick.
Rush. Rush. Tillman. Timothy Evans. Bloom. Bloom. Sawyer. Sawyer. Beavers. Caldwell. Shaw. Vedolliak. Hules. Ferry. Madrick. Burke. Carter. Langford. Streeter. Streeter. Kellum. Sheen. Jones. Jesse Evans. Garcia.
Well, I thought we might be able to hear any significant switches in the course of this vote, but it's so noisy in council chambers, we're not really able to hear very many of the responses. But this is the motion to adopt Alderman Nuteras's declaration, which would set forth the rules by which we might see the election of a mayor tonight. First among those rules is that a written declaration from a candidate would have to be given, so we know who's a candidate and who's not. And then they go ahead and do nominations. Any member of the body could nominate. They would file those nominations with the clerk. The clerk would call the roll.
Cutler's.
It would be determined by a majority of those present, and they'll just keep right on voting until somebody gets a majority. So, it would be very clear if this was adopted that we might be able to begin to proceed with the election of a mayor tonight.
But theoretically, you could have fifty aldermen nominating each other in an endless process to keep this ball rolling as long as possible without resolution.
You heard Alderman Mel say that the opposition, in this case, the Evans people, had promised to keep them there all night.
You know, there's another issue. Motions to adjourn are not debatable. And I don't know whether they would entertain more motions to adjourn or not and keep it going that way. They could motion to adjourn to date certain, etc. Here's the main motion, finally.
On the motion, there are thirty ayes and seventeen nays. The motion passes. Alderman Tillman?
I move that we adjourn.
Well...
The clerk, please take the rolls. Not amendable.
There's another motion to adjourn. Now, I think that gives us a pretty good indication of how many votes there are. Because as you know, on the first roll call, there were thirty votes.
Rhodey.
And this is another, this is another motion to adjourn. There were thirty votes, now there are thirty votes on the declaration and setting out the rules.
I think it's also important, Dick, that the, that the first attempt to delay after the motion got to the floor was a motion to adjourn, which is just pretty standard. It's not anything that's really going to delay anything very long. And if that's all that's left up their sleeve, then we might start to proceed now.
Yeah, I, but you never know.
No kidding, no kidding, Dick.
I mean...
What I keep trying to think now, in my foggy state here, is what's left for the opposition beyond the motion to adjourn, apart from nominating all of the opposition to Eugene Sawyer?
Well, let's see if we can find out. Peter Carl might be able to get Larry Bloom over here, and maybe we can get some answers. He's a pretty good parliamentaryian also. And we'll see if we can get some answers. Alderman Bloom, tell me something. What's left now? I mean, is there any, are there any other motions now after this motion to be adjourned? Or can they just keep doing that?
Well, a motion to adjourn is an order at any time. However, assuming there's no further motion to adjourn, the ultimate issue is on the table, which is that we have now have adopted, or will soon adopt, this declaration, and we will begin to act pursuant to it, which means that nominations would be in order.
So, you don't think there'll be any further delaying motions?
I think there may be some, yes.
What kind?
Well, surely, there can be debate on the candidates. And it won't be motions, but it will be debate on the candidates.
In other words, a filibuster.
Well, that's one way to look at it.
Proposal filibuster is what we're looking for.
I haven't heard of any such proposal. But surely, every alderman is able to testify and is, has a right to. However, there could be motions to cut off debate.
On the motion to adjourn, there are twenty-eight, twenty-eight ayes.
I'm sure that motion would succeed.
Now, aren't there time limits?
We have the declaration on the floor.
No, there's no time limit in the rules. Generally, the chair can get twenty-six votes to set time limits.
No, no time limits. Been set yet at this point. And so, we may now go through a series of motions to adjourn. Alderman Orr, yeah, yeah.
Dick, if you can hear me, I'm also interested. The first thing that has to happen is the candidate, the possible candidates have to file a written consent. Would Alderman Bloom be willing to do that right now?
Well, the candidates have to file a written consent. Are you, are you gonna file a written consent?
No, I'm not.
How many candidates do you know of who have or may be filing a written consent?
Two or at most three. Two, surely, Sawyer and Evans, maybe Alderman Stone.
And so, that would take a little while, but they could do that in one paragraph, could they not?
Oh, the statement of candidacy is one sentence.
Yeah, one sentence, okay. So there's the answer on that. Terry, you gonna file a statement of candidacy? Terry Gabinski?
I'm not gonna file a statement of candidacy, but I would like to file a major objection against the chair. Our interim mayor is out of control and has completely lost all credibility in this council.
Well, what do you think's gonna happen?
I think that unfortunately, he has lost, he's lost his fairness and his view of justice. He has a fairness button on, and apparently, he should look down in his lapel and see what it says. Maybe he'll remember who he said he was going to be.
We're headed for court, aren't we?
I don't know. Well, I think there was a case, there was an attempt to make a case early on so that they would have a vehicle in which to go to court with. And that wouldn't surprise me.
Dick, we...
Carol Marine has a question.
It's possible that the mayor will be in the chair. And you remember that once you're in the chair, that makes a major difference.
Yeah, Carol?
Will you ask Alderman Gabinski if he thinks that we're going to see a vote on Eugene Sawyer in the next few hours?
You think we're gonna see a vote on Eugene Sawyer in the next few hours?
Yes.
How quickly, any predictions?
Well, if the chair comes back to being honest, decent, and fair, which it's not, we can see a vote in the next thirty minutes. But if he continues to recognize motions which are just merely made to delay the inevitable, then of course, we could be here all night. Eugene Sawyer getting stronger over this. Earlier in the night, he was kind of waffling. And now, if this is going on... Yes, he's getting stronger. I think we're all stronger.
Okay, well, there you go. I think what they're trying to do is to try to come to some consensus. I think most of them are probably getting tired. We're gonna come down to a vote, but there are people who are threatening a filibuster, as you heard. And so, we have no way of knowing exactly how long we might be here. I suspect that to keep that filibuster to a minimum, Alderman Burke and the members of his block could refrain from making any speeches other than those necessary.
So, where we stand right now is we're taking a moment to give those people who might be candidates the opportunity to file a written consent, so that there isn't, there isn't a nomination made for someone who doesn't want to run or doesn't want to have any part of the process. We'll know right away who's gonna be in this and who won't.
Yeah, I think that's the way to do it, though. You gotta tell that particular person to put your name on the line if you want to run, sign on. If you don't want to run, okay, then don't sign in. But not gonna be any mystery guests.
Have you seen any movement on the part of Eugene Sawyer to go file?
I haven't seen any movement whatsoever. They are gathered around Sawyer, and they've been talking with him. Sawyer has sat here, he's been sitting here very quietly throughout the evening, watching all of this. And I've seen no movement whatsoever. Alderman Pachinsky is...
He says that after this short recess, we may go right into nominations at this point. If that happens, and are we looking at an election of a mayor?
Yep. We'll have the nominations, and there'll be some speeches and things. And there'll be some voting, and we'll have our next mayor very shortly. It would be my hope.
What about a filibuster?
Uh, it's possible. We may be here till six o'clock in the morning. I hope you're all on time and a half.
We appreciate the aldermen's good wishes.
Our news director is in the booth. Will you tell him that again, Alderman? Say that again. But...
I think, we'll get to the business of picking the mayor very shortly, I think. Depending, of course, on nominating speeches and all that. But we intend to stay here until we get it done.
Well, they've gathered around Alderman Sawyer. You see any weakening, any wavering or anything, Alderman Pachinsky? You heard of any?
No, I have not heard of any.
Is he getting stronger with this, because as the time goes on? I know he was waffling a little earlier. Is he getting stronger now?
Oh, sure, because we're now almost in the final inning of the play, the selection of the chair, the mayor.
Yeah, Carol?
Hi, my name is Jose Andrade. I'm the community outreach coordinator at Chicago Access Corporation. What you're watching is a very unique channel. Most of the programs you have been watching are made by people just like you. And if you're interested in becoming one of these people and producing your own programs, then I think it's time for you to become involved with Chicago Access Corporation. It's very easy to do these programs, and all it takes is little time and a lot of energy. I hope to see you soon at our next orientation session, so you too can become an access producer.
Well, they've gathered around Alderman Sawyer. You see any weakening, any wavering or anything, Alderman Pachinsky? You heard of any?
No, I have not heard of any.
Is he getting stronger with this, because as the time goes on? I know he was waffling a little earlier. Is he getting stronger now?
Oh, sure, because we're now almost in the final inning of the play, the selection of the chair, the mayor.
Yeah, Carol?
Dick, ask Alderman Pachinsky what his head count is right now for Sawyer.
If, if, if what?
What's his head count for Sawyer now? How many votes is he gonna get?
What's your head count? Carol Marine wants to know, for Sawyer.
For Sawyer, about thirty-four.
About thirty-four?
Yeah.
Well, why couldn't you use thirty-four votes then and suspend the rules without going through all of this?
Well, because there's been a change in shifting of votes on these procedural matters. Some of our members voted for adjourn, and there's been some shifting back and forth. But we feel that when we come to the actual selection of the candidate for mayor, our last count showed thirty-four.
Well, so, there you have it. Alderman Sawyer is now talking with his supporters rather ardently. He's gesturing.
Who's around him, Dick? Who's he talking to?
Well, we've seen Bernie Hanson, John Madrick. We have seen, well, other, I'm trying, I can't see who's leaning over at this particular point. Not an alderman, I can tell you that. Gene Shilter is there. Alderman LeVar from the Forty-Fifth Ward is there. Bernie Hanson from the Forty-Fourth Ward. Those others are gathered around Evans' chair. They are, Evans, of course, is not there. He's on the phone. I don't know who he's talking with. He may be talking with Judson Minor. Judson Minor is up on the platform. I doubt it, though. He may be, who knows what's going on here? Pat O'Connor, by the way, is here. You asked who else was around him. Sawyer is on his feet. I don't know if he's moving. I don't know what he's doing. Sawyer is on his feet, I don't know if he's moving, uh, I don't know what he's doing.
Maybe trying to get his circulation going, like a number of us.
We did, we got up and walked around the studio here for a while, just to, I understand him wanting to get up and walk around.
I, I don't blame him. That's a good idea, I'd love to be able to walk. We're crammed in the press box here, as you've seen all night, uh, probably about two inches.
We're also, we're also watching history be made, though, there is a...
I, I think that's the perspective to keep, uh, this is history being made, I mean, one way or another, it is a part of Chicago's history, it is the way Chicago works, and, uh, and, uh, this is a crucial job, I mean, this, I mean, what is it, a two billion dollar budget?
Two point seven billion dollars.
If it's approved by the end of the year.
If it's approved, and what, a ninety-four million dollar tax increase?
Well, I'm, I'm told that there may be some agreement on that, too, you know? Talking about the budget for a minute, Mayor Harold Washington himself was planning some amendments on the budget, uh, in fact, I think he was supposed to receive budget amendments either that day or that week, the day he passed away or that week, and, uh, some of his own aldermen were coming in with some budget amendments to lower the eighty-four million dollar tax increase, and, and, uh, you know, some of the, some of the aldermen, uh, in the white block have been saying all along that, that that's a major consideration for them, they wanna be able to lower some of their property taxes, I mean, wanna lower the property tax hike, the size of the hike, and, uh, they have said that Alderman Sawyer feels the same way, that, uh, that his, uh, his ward is going to be reassessed, or has been reassessed this year, and, uh, he wants to make sure that his homeowners in his ward also don't carry a, a heavy tax burden, but I know that that's one of the things they've been dealing for, is some reduction in taxes, um, and also, you know, it should be pointed out, that people have talked about coalitions, well, Gene Sawyer may be putting together a coalition, let me just face it.
Well, there's, there's no question about that, Dick, and I, I think a point that has really been lost through all of this are the, the relatively new things that have come up in the last couple of days, and what seems to be a consistent story, that, uh, that Tim Evans was actually the first candidate to approach the white block, if we wanna call him that, about the possibility of getting some votes, and that Eugene Sawyer has claimed that he did not even consider that possibility until he believed Tim Evans had approached them, and then he says he did.
Well, Alderman Mel is, has joined us again here. I wanna ask you a question, Alderman Mel, we're talking about building coalitions, and, you know, people have been talking about keeping the twenty-six together, et cetera, and, and keep the Washington coalition. I mean, we were just saying that what might be going on here is that Gene Sawyer might be building a coalition, I mean, he has, uh, at least ten black aldermen with him, and there are only eighteen black aldermen, he, if he keeps ten to twelve, he's got the majority of the black aldermen, does he not?
Exactly, and I think that you'll see with Alderman Sawyer, as a man that I could support for, uh, election, and I can tell you right now that, that the job that I think he'll do, and I would hope that we'll all be behind him, and I think we'll build a coalition, because, you know something? I am not afraid, I am not afraid to bring this man into my community, because he's a decent man, and he'll listen to the people in my community, and I am sure that we'll be, our community will be well-served by this man, uh, with services like, like we need, and so I, you know, I, 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 I don't think that there's anything to fear from this man at all. I think the, I think the, the other candidate is dangerous.
Wha- why?
Well, because I think that in fact, that you saw the, you saw the type of, the type of, uh, emotions you saw on the street tonight that was brought down by, on his behalf, I mean, in fact, that, that they tried to really disrupt this, they tried this, they actually tried to stop this with a, with a, with a demonstration, uh, I, I mean, in a free society, is that what we're, is that what we're looking?
Well, demonstrations are legal in a free society.
No, I, I understand, I understand, but, but wouldn't you think that in fact, that, that if, and, and what's, what's disturbing is that all the people said from the beginning, the game rules were from the beginning, and every person, Alderman Bloom, Alderman Orr, Alderman Smith, Alderman Davis, when they thought they had the votes, said, "Let's all agree that if whoever's got the twenty-six votes, we won't block him." But all of a sudden now, their candidate didn't have the twenty-six votes, and now they throw in every roadblock they possibly can in his way. Now, wait a second, you know, and, and I, there's no excuse for that, you can't, you can't legitimately tell one people, say, "Oh, come on, we're gonna all be together," because they thought they had all the votes that they could have for, for, um, Alderman Evans, and all of a sudden, they didn't have the votes for Alderman Evans, now we changed the rules, and I say, and that's dangerous in a society. You don't tell people you're gonna do one thing and then do another, you don't say, "Let's, let's be fair." You know what I hope we do after this is over, and I hope that our candidate wins, and I think we got thirty-three votes for him, I hope that he wins, that if in fact, once he does win, I would hope that we all rally behind him, I would hope, I would hope the Hispanic community, I would hope the, the, the black community, I hope the white community would rally behind this guy, and let's give him a chance, that's all I'm asking, let's give the man a chance.
Let me tell you, though, that the perception has always been that the Washington administration, at least Mayor Washington always claimed to be a reformer, and that, and now, now wait a minute, let me finish, and, uh, and that, uh, he is a ward committeeman, he's been in the regular democratic organization a long time, there is a fear that he will return to the politics of old.
Let's talk about the two candidates, I know them both well. Tim Evans, I probably know better than any single man in, in the, in the twenty-nine. I served with him, uh, we both got elected at the same time, we were in the Reluctant Rebels when we took on Mike Blandic in nineteen seventy-eight, we, we tried to reorganize the city council when Jane Byrne first got elected, with Tim Evans and myself and Alderman LePence, or Committeeman LePence, so I know Tim Evans, and I know Alderman Sawyer, and I know both of them, and I, and I tell you right now that in fact, let's give the man a chance, let's not, you talk about being committeeman, they're both committeeman, they're both Democratic Ward committeemen. You wanna talk about who was the first one with Mayor Washington? Alderman Sawyer carried the biggest ward four, four times in a row for, for Alderman, uh, for Mayor Washington. Tim Evans, when Mayor Washington first ran, the first, the first powerful black official was Eugene Sawyer. Tim Evans didn't even support him.
He, he endorsed, did he not, did he not endorse Jane Byrne?
Absolutely not, he was the first one.
No, I'm talking about Tim Evans.
Evans, Evans endorsed Jane Byrne, yes. Tim Evans endorsed Jane Byrne. Now, all of a sudden, Washington gets the candidate, and then all of a sudden, he gets religion.
If we could, uh, take our seats.
You want this guy for your mayor? I don't.
Well, I think that's up to the alderman to decide, not up to me, Alderman Richard Mel from the thirty-third ward. Peter, you heard that, you've been here all night, let's bring Peter Carl in on this. Just, you, you, you've sat here rather quietly, what's your assessment of this? Ever seen anything like it?
No, never seen anything like it before in my life, and they're, and they're saying that they're ready to do it all night long, and I'm wondering whether or not they're gonna be able to pull off, they're gonna, if they're gonna be able to pull off the nominations here tonight, and whether or not they're gonna have a vote tonight, or else the, uh, opposition aldermen here, if I can call them at this point, uh, say they're gonna filibuster this all night.
There are two names in nomination...
Well, here we go.
Here we go, here we go. Two names and nominations.
The two names are nomination. And now we're open for discussion. Alderman Davis is recognized.
Well, Alderman Gene Sawyer and Alderman Timothy Evans' names are in nomination.
Mr. President, members of the city council, for the last several days, the city of Chicago has been in a state of shock, state of anxiety, state of pain, and state of turmoil. We have been in a position where the irons of the entire world are upon us, because we have been called upon to make a decision. We have been called upon to make a decision to select an acting mayor for the city of Chicago. This is perhaps not the first time that this situation has existed, but this, Mr. President, is an unusual situation. One of the things that makes it so unusual and so different and so difficult is the fact that in this situation, we're not replacing just a mayor, we're not replacing just another chief executive, we are replacing Harold Washington, who has been elevated to the status of hero in this country. There are many people in the city of Chicago who feel that Mayor Washington had a unique vision, who feel that Mayor Washington was magnanimous in his being and in his personality, and who feel that Harold Washington had changed the face of the city of Chicago unlike anything that we have seen. There are thousands and hundreds of thousands of people who feel that it would be proper and fitting for this city council to carry out the will and the tradition, spirit and programs of Mayor Washington. Many of those individuals feel that Mayor Washington perhaps, while not grooming a successor, but everybody knows that the position of finance chair and floor leader in the Chicago City Council is a position which requires one to work very closely with the mayor. It requires one to have intimate knowledge of a mayor's programs and priorities. It requires one to be steeped in the thinking of that mayor. Harold Washington saw fit to choose a young, dynamic lawyer to serve as his floor leader, to serve as the chairman of the important finance committee. He chose the honorable Timothy C. Evans of the Fourth Ward. Alderman Evans perhaps was chosen because he has many years of service in the city council, as a stellar performer. He has a unique ability to understand situations, to crystallize problems, to recognize need and propose solutions. He is able to work effectively across the board with all members of the city council. He has excellent rapport with people in the general community. He gives to people a feeling of confidence, a feeling that he can in fact tackle any job, that he can in fact glean from a group of people a direction. He's very studious, very careful, very thoughtful, very analytical, and you know that with Timothy Evans, decisions are not going to be made hastily, that they're going to be researched, that they're going to be analyzed, that they're going to be looked at. You know, Mr. President, that with Alderman Evans, it's kinda like the Allstate slogan, "You're in good hands with Tim." You're in good hands with Tim. And so given the fact that all of these qualities exist, and this fine and outstanding gentleman of impeccable character, who not only has this personally, but has the will of the people of the city of Chicago with him, I saw crowds of people just the other day, all weekend, chanting, "We want Tim, we want Tim." As I drove down the street, Mr. President, I saw people standing along the highways and byways chanting, "We want Tim, we want Tim." I believe that there is nothing better than we could do than to give the people what they want, give the people who they want. Therefore, Mr. President, I'm very pleased to speak in half of the election of the honorable Timothy C. Evans for acting mayor of the city of Chicago.
Alderman Langford is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the city council. Earlier today, we gathered here in this chamber to honor the memory of our beloved mayor, Mayor Harold Washington. Now, as a result of Mayor Washington's untimely death, we as members of the Chicago City Council are called upon to fulfill our statutory mandate and elect one of our members as the acting mayor of the city of Chicago. For three years, I sat in this city council as a member of the city council and saw this city torn apart with dissension, with most of the mayor's programs voted down because we had a twenty-nine, twenty-one vote. It was heartbreaking, it was painful. The day that we started working together in this city council, when we had votes thirty-seven, thirty-eight, forty, sometimes unanimously, in favor of the mayor, mayor's programs, all of which, we must admit, were designed to upgrade this city and to make it the finest city in this country and in this world. I was one of the most gratified persons in this city council. I knew, I cannot speak for the ones in the city council, in the chambers there, but I wish they would have just extended me that courtesy. We extended that courtesy to their candidate and their aldermen. We are mandated to carry out the program of Mayor Harold Washington. Mayor Harold Washington did not represent black people only, Mayor Harold Washington represented all of the people of the city of Chicago, and he used to say it, black, brown, Latino, men, women, white, a rainbow coalition, if you please. Why then is it so impossible for us now to continue to work together, rather than to go back to the days of the, of the destruction, of the programs, of the antagonisms, of the name-calling, of the viciousness that almost ruined this city and our bond rating, which is a very important item? We are going straight up in this city as a result of the work of our beloved mayor. Don't let us sink back into those three years of torment for this beloved city. Mayor Harold Washington would not want us to go back, Mayor Harold Washington would want us to go forward. That was indicated, and I can outshout all of you, and I will do it if necessary. You do not intimidate me.
Can we please have order? The audience, please refrain from making comments, all, please refrain from making comments. Alderman Langford has the floor.
The fact that our mayor wanted this city to go forward was indicated in his endorsement of the latest democratic slate, which represents most of the racial, ethnic groups, men and women in this city. What better indication of the fact that we, the mayor would want us to proceed to include all of the people of the city of Chicago, not just the blacks, not just the browns, not just the whites, but everybody? And the only way we can do that is for this city council to work together. We are together, we will stay together, and toward that end, at this time, I place in nomination for mayor of the city of this, uh, city of this Chicago, Mr. Gene Sawyer.
Can we, can we please have order? Can we please have order? Ladies and gentlemen, we need order, so we continue, we're now allowing nominations for these two candidates. Alderman Gutierrez is recognized.
Because I want a mayor of the city of Chicago that can go beyond the fifty members of this city council, because I want a mayor of the city of Chicago who can reach beyond these chambers, I will support the candidacy of Tim Evans for mayor of the city of Chicago. Because, Mr. President, the most important legacy that the mayor of the city of Chicago left us was his ability to go beyond these chambers, so that when we made poor decisions, he could call upon the people to rectify that situation, and Tim Evans can do that, Mr. Mayor. I have to support a candidate for mayor that I can trust. I have to support a candidate for mayor which I can look in the eyes. I have to support a candidate for mayor that not only when I address him do I call him Mr. Mayor, but I must be able to look him in the eyes and say, "You are also honorable, Mr. Mayor." And the only candidate for mayor, Mr. President, which has been presented to this body that I can call honorable, is the alderman of the Fourth Ward, the honorable alderman of the Fourth Ward, Timothy Evans. Mr. President, the mayor of the city of Chicago, may he rest in peace. Never made a deal, never made a deal, never made a deal. He never made a deal, and he shouldn't now. I need a mayor, and if we do not elect Tim Evans, watch him, they're coming for the ethics ordinance first, because they want to fill their pockets. They're coming for the ethics ordinance first, because they're going to want to fill their pockets. There are members of this council, Mr. President, who didn't want the ethics ordinance. There are members in this council, Mr. President, that never wanted to share, that never wanted fairness, that got upset when Latinos and blacks and the Chinese and everyone else in this city began to share in an equitable manner the city resources, Mr. I can only support a candidate for mayor, Mr. President, that never made a deal. The only candidate, Mr. President, that has been put before this body is Tim Evans, that fits that bill. Mr. President, the record is clear, and we will make that record here tonight. We will make that record here tonight. I'm not going anywhere, Mr. President. For while the mayor of the city of Chicago may not be with us, there are many here which will live his legacy, Mr. President. We will not permit his dream to be stolen. We were elected, Mr. President, to serve as public servants, and we must not act as public thieves of the dreams of Harold Washington. Mr. President, the only man that I know that has been put before this body that will act as a public servant is Timothy Evans. The people have made a call to us. Let us respond to the people. Let us respond to the people. They have made their voice evident and clear. I am with Timothy Evans, Mr. Mayor, to close, because he made no deal with Alderman Mel, he made no deal with Alderman Burke, he made no deal with Verdoliak, and neither will I today support Tim Evans for the future of the city of Chicago.
Victor Verdoliak is on his feet.
Will the audience please, please be quiet. Alderman Henry is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Bill Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Henry is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. My fellow colleagues, I rise to second the nomination of my friend, Gene Sawyer. Mr. President? Mr. President?
The audience, please, audience, please, please be quiet. Everybody has a right to speak. Please refrain from any comments, please refrain from any comments. Alderman Henry, please continue.
Mr. President, thank you for that courtesy information to the crowd. Mr. President, I know that Gene Sawyer, for the last 20 hours, I know for a fact... Mr. President?
We have to have quiet before we can continue. Will the audience, let me explain to the audience where we are. Let me explain to the audience where we are. We do not want to have to ask people to leave. We want to finish our deliberations. We're now in the process of nominating speeches for the two candidates. We have a right to hear those speeches. People have waited a long time to make those speeches. We do not want to have to clear the chambers or ask individuals to leave, but you're going to have to be courteous and refrain from making comments. Alderman Henry, please continue.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I know for a fact, for the last 20 hours, Eugene Sawyer have been working hard to solve this problem that have divided our group. Now, Mr. President, allow me to say this. I hear a lot about deals. I hear a lot of folks talking about arrangements. I hear a lot of folks talking about Gene's quality and his integrity. I know for a fact, and not a rumor, I know for a fact, that Alderman Sawyer have tried to sit down with Alderman of the other side, who disagreed with our side. I know for a fact that Gene Sawyer have tried his best to solve the problems of this city. Now, Mr. President, once again, Mr. President, I'd like to be heard. I don't disrespect anybody.
We're going to ask you...
I don't disrespect anybody.
If individuals continue to shout out, we are going to have to ask those individuals to leave. We have to proceed. The aldermen, each of them are elected in wards of roughly 60,000 people. We all have the right to speak. We have been very patient. If individuals continue to shout out or disturb the proceedings, I would be asking for the sergeant-at-arms to be carefully watching that, and if need be, we're going to have to remove individuals. We do not want to do that. If you continue, we're going to have to ask you to leave. Alderman Henry.
The hard worker of Gene Sawyer, over 16 years, and I've known him since 1961, over 16 years in this council, have provided quite effective leadership for his people of the Sixth Ward. That's the reason they kept electing him. And in 1982, Mr. President, Gene Sawyer won the distinction of being the first black alderman in ward commitment in this city to endorse his friend, Harold Washington. He was the first. And let's, let us look at the facts here. I know I'm emotional. My people are emotional. Love my people. Gene Sawyer loves his people. And make no point of trying to deny that he loves his people. They love him, and that's the reason they keep sending him back to this council. Now, let's talk about Gene Sawyer's integrity. Let's talk about that. I have never heard Gene Sawyer speak ill will of some people, and I know he didn't agree with him. I have never heard Gene Sawyer talk about revenge against anybody. I have never heard Gene Sawyer threaten anybody. I have never heard of Gene Sawyer associating himself with people that disrespect each other. That is why, that is why when the mayor, our great mayor, Mayor Washington, would leave that podium, he would turn that gravel over into the hand of Gene Sawyer. Now, there has to be a reason for this. There has to be a reason for this. We are blessed, Mr. President, and members of this council, we are blessed on having a mayor of Harold Washington's quality and leadership, because he laid a blueprint. If we read this blueprint that he laid, a federal agenda for Chicago, a state agenda for housing, a national housing program, a program for jobs, a program for senior citizens, and he just started, the mayor had just started, the Summit for Education to Improve and Reform That Education System. Gene Sawyer, Mr. President, can and will stand up for the programs initiated by the great Mayor Harold Washington. I know that for a fact. I am personally, I am personally hurt inside to see the people doing the threats, causing threats on persons' lives, causing threats on my staff, causing threats to my mother, and I will never, never accept that. But Gene Sawyer, but Gene Sawyer sets their cool. Gene Sawyer sets their cool and calm. Mr. President, that's the kind of man we need now, is a calm, cool, effective, experienced legislator. We don't need any rhetoric. We need a man that's going to come to work. We need a person that can go across this city. We need somebody that can bring us together. Gene Sawyer is that man. Gene Sawyer is that man. Now, I heard one of my colleagues, I heard one of my colleagues that I personally admire, but he don't know what he's talking about when he's talking about a deal. Let's talk about the deals. Let's talk about the deals. The deal is to use the Operation Push Memorial Services for a rally. The deal is, the deal is, Mr. President, the deal is to use a memorial services held at the pavilion. You know, everybody else know, it's on TV, it said memorial. I have the plugger here, but it turned into a political rally. Integrity? Gene Sawyer, Gene Sawyer was not a part of that. Integrity? Gene Sawyer was not a part of that. Now, my friend points out about deals. We all, if we are honest with the people, we all was trying to deal. Everybody had a hidden agenda. Let's tell the truth. Take a lie test. I'll take a lie test and say, "There's no deal made by Gene Sawyer." Will they do that? I don't know. But I'm saying to you, Mr. President, and my fellow colleagues, I love you all, just because I disagree with you does not mean I'm going to hate you, because I have learned to be bigger than hate. I must learn, I have learned how to love. I've taken that from Harold Washington's legacy, and I'll take it from the leadership of Eugene Sawyer. When people went over to other white ethnic groups, they slid into the back door, Mr. President, because they didn't want nobody to see them. They went in and, "Let's cut a deal. Bill Henry going to be over here to cut a deal. Let's cut a deal first before he get here." Now, after Alderman here wants to tell the truth, I wish after we finish, the aldermen that the people came to to cut a deal, go to the press and give the names. Then we'll start talking about these deals. Then we'll start talking about these deals. Not a person in this city council have the right to accuse another for cutting a deal when they was busy cutting the deal.
Will the audience vote those, support and opposition?
Mr. President, people don't like to hear the truth. And I'm going to tell the truth. Yes, there was some deals cut. There was some deals cut by some payrollers in the city payroll. They had to cut some deals to save the jobs. Let's tell it like it is. Let's tell about the deals that was saved, to save the jobs of out-of-towners that came to Chicago acting though we don't have qualified blacks and whites and Hispanics to put on the boards. Down! When you go and try to cut a deal to save your behind, something is wrong with you. Gene Sawyer have not cut no deals to save nobody's behind. Gene Sawyer, Mr. President, have not cut any deals. I am proud to stand before you. I am honest and about deals. I will tell the world if I cut a deal. I'm not ashamed to say, because everybody in this council cut deals for time and time. Everybody here, you vote for my package, I'll vote for yours. Give me a vote in the committee. Hey, Bill Henry, could you come over and give me an extra vote? Could you get down here on time? We're going to start the council. I need your help. That's a deal. Gene Sawyer be here every day. As president pro temp of this great city council, Gene Sawyer is here every day. You come in at 9 o'clock, Gene Sawyer be everybody here. That's what we need. Somebody going to be on time, somebody going to be in that chair, somebody going to be up there taking care of it. That's what we need.
Alderman, can you breathe? Bring your mouth to close, please.
Yes, yes, sir. I could talk about Gene Sawyer all day and night, because I know Gene Sawyer, and I tell the people of Chicago, I tell the people in my ward, that Gene Sawyer the best. You give him 24 hours, and Gene Sawyer start proving to you that he's the best material among this whole group.
Alderman Rice is recognized. Can we please have order? Alderman Rice is recognized.
Mr. President, council members, I rise to support the candidacy of the best man for this position, Alderman Timothy C. Evans of the Fourth Ward. And, Mr. President, I rise with no hesitation, because I understand the role that this man have to play, the man who's going to be the acting mayor of the city of Chicago. And, Mr. President, when I reflect upon sitting in the mayor's office, discussing problems in my ward and in the city with Mayor Washington, the first thing that one notice is the enormity of the office, the chair, the desk. That desk, that chair, that office is enormous, because the responsibility of the role of the mayor of the city of Chicago is enormous. And, Mr. President, we don't need small people in a large office. We don't need, Mr. President, a small man in a large seat. Mr. President, the next mayor of the city of Chicago have to be one who has demonstrated an ability to work with all people, have to be one who's demonstrated an ability to be sensitive to all people, have to be one who's demonstrated a willingness to take on challenges, challenges that confront the people of the city of Chicago. And, Mr. President, I submit to you and to all my colleagues, that there's only one man who's demonstrated that ability over the years, and that is Alderman Timothy C. Evans of the Fourth Ward. Evans of the 4th Ward. There are deals, and there are ideals. Mr. President, the people, when they see the final count, in terms of the election of the acting mayor of the city of Chicago, they gonna know exactly where the deals have been cut at. Because people are not stupid. They know that one and two comes after one, and they know that the afternoon follows the morning, and they know that, Mr. President, they know that things have to have a logical extension. And I submit to you, Mr. President, when the vote is taken, and when you have a second black mayor of the city of Chicago, and you know that for the last five years, that there are certain aldermen in this city council who fought the first black city mayor of the city of Chicago tooth and nail. Severed ties his programs, held up his appointments, disrespected the man in the office. And when you see, Mr. President, that these same individuals, the same ones, you know what I'm talking about, the old Verdoliak 29. When you see these same individuals rallying behind a man, a black man, then you know that a deal has been cut that cuts the people of the city of Chicago out. Mr. President, this mayor, this man Timothy Evans, Mr. President, has carried on the programs of Mayor Washington. Has carried on the programs of Mayor Washington at his behest. Was a loyal and trusted member of Mayor Washington's inner circle. Was responsible, Mr. President, not only for the Finance Committee, we elected him the chairman of the Finance Committee, but was handpicked by Mayor Washington, handpicked by Mayor Washington to be his floor leader. Not only that, Mr. President, but this man was chosen by Mayor Washington to handle his political office. Those choices, and we all know that Mayor Washington was a consummate politician, those choices and those decisions wasn't made lightly. They were made after much deliberation. He looked over the whole breadth of the council. He considered each and every council member, and he came up with one man, because he knew that this man not only had the ability, the skills, but he also had the commitment to carry forth these programs. And I submit to you, that if we're going to continue reform government in this city, and we're gonna continue the programs that made this city, put this city on the path of becoming one of the better cities governmental in the city of Chicago, then we can do no less, no less, than support the man that I believe that Mayor Washington would want us to support, and that is Alderman Timothy C. Evans. Thank you very much.
Alderman Jones is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. Members of this city council, I'm not gonna stand here and call all you a bunch of thieves. I'm not gonna say ill things about you, because you are not deserving of that. There's nobody in this city council that's a thief. There's nobody in this city council that's a low-life type of individual. And I resent that very much for anyone of my colleagues to get on this floor and call me a thief or give any indication to the people in this gallery or the people that's out in the city of Chicago, to say that any alderman here in this city council is a thief. Because what you're saying when you say that, you are disrespecting the 50,000 people that each and every one of us in this city represent. Tonight, tonight, Mr. President, our city is in grave danger. Make no mistake about it. It's in grave danger, because tonight we are sitting here, taking part in history, and trying to get and replace a mayor to serve in the footsteps of a giant. A giant who brought all sections of this city together, and a giant who showed us that all we have to do is have respect and appreciation of each other, and we don't have to worry about what gender, what color the individual is. The other day in my ward, I went out in the ward to check on a job in my ward, and lo and behold, there was a man there, an engineer from India. I think that's nice. Few years ago, it would have been a white person or one of the local niggers in town. I think we know that. We got to learn that we've got to get along, and this city is in danger. The city is in danger, because the people's voices is not being heard. Tonight, tonight, we have a chance to sit here, and, Mr. President, Mr. President.
Once again, once again, please, would everyone both on this side of the, uh, this side of the aisle and over there, please be quiet. We are going to ask individuals to leave if you persist in making noise. We're going to ask people to be removed if you persist in interrupting the deliberations.
Mr. President?
One second, we have a lot of people around here. What is all the noise? Cannot be taken care of. Okay, please continue, Alderman.
Mr. President, I will continue by saying that Chicago have a reputation of being a city of division, a division among races. We had one purse, one hope, and that man came along and showed us that we all could respect each other, all could respect each other over this city. The man sitting here tonight that I support is a man that's not a thief. I don't believe he cut any deals. I believe he's faithful to his wife. I believe he's a good father. I know for 14 years, he'd been down here in this city council representing the people of Chicago, and I certainly believe that he have leaded and carried on the works of this mayor from this floor as the floor leader, just as good as anyone could possibly expect of him. I think that Tim Evans is a fine decent man. I think that Tim Evans can lead and keep this city together. We don't need to be divided. We've had too much of that. It's no point in being divided. I have a belief in the Bible, and it says that when you have faith the size of a mustard seed, you can turn then to the mountain and say, be there removed. And I think Mayor Washington proved that to us. Just have faith, just have faith and confidence. Respect the other person. It ain't no big deal. All you have to do is just respect the other person. Now, Mr. President, Mr. President, I stand here greatly honored to be a part of this body, whether the likes of Paul Douglas, whether the likes of Ralph Metcalf, whether the likes of fine decent men have served this city. And I stand here tonight, Mr. President, saying that Alderman Timothy Evans, from the good state of Arkansas, who had the good wisdom and good parents to send him to school to obtain an education, learned him to be respectable to other people, learned him to be mindful that in the eyesight of God, all of us are equal, all of us are the same. This man can lead this city, and I stand here proudly to say that right on with Tim.
Alderman Jones is one of those thought to be with...
Alderman Figaroa, followed by Alderman Stone.
Alderman Sawyer, initially. From the 21st Ward. Cecil Partee is the ward committee man out there.
Let me try to add a little levity to this. You know what I indicated this morning, in trying to talk to my family here, so that they can come together, I was so sincere, you notice I did not talk about anybody else. I wanted to talk to my family. Now I see, in fact, that our family is divided. Family is divided, the family that, yes, Harold Washington put together. He put us together, and the same people, the same people that for four years were the obstructionists, were the catalysts in making sure that we would be divided. These same individuals, have you ever watched National Geographics on Channel 11, where you're in Africa, and you see that strong buffalo, that buck, running through the fields? And he's strong. The buzzers and the vultures say, nah, we gonna get him. We leave him alone. Let him get tired, let him get old, let him get weak, let him die, then we go in and feed on it. We got those vultures here. They're all around us. These vultures would not attack that strong buck when he was here. You, you vultures know who I'm talking about. You're all around us. Now, I see when Bill Henry talks about all the things that Harold Washington was, and how Eugene Sawyer endorsed Harold Washington, and I see these vultures clapping, clapping. We're here to fore, they would rather see that buck in that field where they can prey on him. Yes, they're here now, these same individuals clapping, trying to make it look like there was a lot of support. We know where the support is, and it's in that man right there. I don't have, I don't have to mention his name, because it's known throughout all Chicago. And we're gonna see what's gonna happen, because the people out there can't be fooled. They know what's going on. They know what's going on, 'cause some of these same vultures would not have the man they're supporting in their house till three o'clock in the morning, and he gotta have a sheet over him. Because they would not be caught with him around their neighborhood. We know what's happening. We know what's going on. We ain't no fools. We've come a long way, and we ain't going back. We ain't going back. We're gonna go forward, and that man right there, his reform program will meet its day with the help of those people out there. We may not have the votes here, but those people will speak, and those vultures will meet their day. I urge my colleagues, my family, to think about it. Think about it now, because it's close. And those people, let me reiterate, cannot be fooled.
Hello, and welcome to Community Access Cable Television. This is a very special public service channel that's provided as part of your cable television service here in the city of Chicago. All of the programs that you see on this channel are provided by groups, organizations, and individuals here in the city of Chicago. They control the program content. We at Chicago Access Network provide the equipment, the studios, the facilities, and the channels to make these programs possible. We don't control the program content. So if you're watching this channel and you see a program that you like, please let us know, so we can pass along your words of encouragement to the community producer. And if you see a program that you don't like or that you disagree with, please also give us a call, because we'd like to offer you the opportunity to appear on Access Television. Remember, Community Access Television will be what you make it. Thanks for watching.
Okay, I have Alderman Stone, Evans, Nateras, Schiller, Streeter. Alderman Stone has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, in my hand, I have a motion to elect an acting mayor, signed by Victor Verdoliak, and which I was nominated, together with the consent which I executed more than three hours ago, and which, about an hour ago, I withdrew from the clerk at the time we started the process. And I did it for a reason. More than 35 years ago, I was admitted to the practice of law. I believe in the rule of law. And what I've seen in the last eight hours upsets me greatly, and should upset every single individual in this room. I've seen intimidation. I've seen threats. I've seen threats of physical violence, and as little as a few minutes ago, when the lady who placed in nomination the name of Eugene Sawyer was told, "We have gang bangers in It is only a few hours, maybe 36 hours, since we had the privilege of attending the funeral of the late mayor. And it's interesting that during the course of that funeral, we heard the words of various ministers, and they told us something about Harold Washington. And they told us the reason for his success was that he preached love. And isn't it interesting that three previous speakers, in proposing the nomination of the successor to Harold Washington, have preached hate? There's no question that I was in opposition to the mayor in a prior term. There's no question of that. I make no bones about it. But the fact is that I voted with you, gentlemen. I voted with you in the course of the reorganization of this council. I voted with you when we selected Alderman Eugene Sawyer as the president pro temp, as the chairman of the rules, and we selected Alderman Timothy Evans as the chairman of finance. In so voting, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen, I stated to you, and ladies, the reason I said gentlemen is that previous speakers were gentlemen. I stated by that vote that I had confidence in these gentlemen to fulfill those roles that which they were selected to fill. And isn't it interesting? And isn't it interesting that now there's references to one of those two gentlemen as not being honorable? There's references to one of those two gentlemen as making deals and operating in stealth in the still of the night? And isn't it interesting that you placed your confidence in that same gentleman as I did? As the people yell in that hallway downstairs, as the people yell in this room here, as the street was filled on LaSalle Street to the extent that people couldn't walk out of this building and couldn't walk across the street, as I couldn't walk from one side of this building to this side of this building, the rule of law had ended. And the mob and the crowd had taken over this council chambers. The fact is, the fact is, my colleagues, that you would do well to follow the precepts of the man whose mantle you will see fit to bestow today. The man who said to you, "Spread love because in love you will make your enemy part of yourself." But no, you stood up and you said, "Those vultures, those thieves, those men who opposed and fought Harold Washington." You totally ignored the fact that those men also, those men who you castigated so badly, also voted in favor of most of the programs of Harold Washington. You've also neglected to say that this is a legislative body and as such, it is charged with the duty of accepting that which the executive presents and then adopting that which remains. In closing, ladies and gentlemen, let me add one thing. Let me say to you that you do yourself no favor when you saddle an honorable man. And believe me, your candidate is an honorable man. I've known both of these gentlemen for approximately the same time. Gene Sawyer came to this council two years before me and Timothy Evans came five months after me. I knew Tim before he came here. And I would never say anything that would in any way infer on the reputations or on their integrity because I think both of them are fine gentlemen. But you do nothing for your candidate when you stir the mob, when you threaten the people, when you put these fine ladies in jeopardy, when they were afraid to walk in these halls and they stood up and they stood and they did not bow to your threats and they will not bow to your threats because they also have the integrity. I think if there's one thing I am extremely proud of today, it is the women of the city council. My hat's off to you ladies. I guff my hat to you. Yes, stand and give them an applause. I thank you. I thank you for your integrity. I second the nomination of Eugene Sawyer.
Alderman Jesse Evans?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I rise in support of Timothy C. Evans for Acting Mayor of the City of Chicago. Mr. President, it pains me deeply to see my senior colleagues pitted against each other. However, this is not about Gene Sawyer versus Tim Evans. It is the people of Chicago versus the system. Because the system is not allowing the people to participate in the process and this is what the late, great Mayor Harold Washington created for them. And they're being denied that element, that spirit that Mayor Washington permeated throughout this entire system. The people of the city of Chicago have lost their great leader. And losing that leader, it has created much pain, much agony, and much frustration and trying to wonder who will be able to fill the shoes of that extraordinary guy. It is a very difficult choice. So the person they're closely related with was Timothy C. Evans. Alderman Tim Evans is extremely qualified, extremely capable. He elected in 1973 to the city council, admitted to the bar in 1969, served on the Health Committee, Ports and Wars and Bridges Committee, chaired the Budget, and is currently chairing the Finance Committee. Mr. President, we still have an opportunity to carry out that dream of Mayor Harold Washington. It's not too late if this great body will search their souls. But it may be too late if we do not look a little further and beyond our personal desires. So, Mr. President, I place the nomination of Timothy C. Evans and I support him for Acting Mayor of the City of Chicago. Thank you.
Okay, I have Alderman Nateras, Schiller, Streeter, Tillman, Garcia. Alderman Nateras Shaw.
President and members of the city council. This has been a very, very trying period for all of us. We lost Harold Washington. I indicated to you this morning, and I'm firmly convinced that Mayor Washington had reached the point in his political career and his goals, where having fought the battle, having broken the barrier, he wished to achieve one thing in this city and that was reconciliation. A bringing together of everybody, of all races, colors, and creeds, sexual orientation, every ethnic group, molding it together, reaching out. He was reaching out in areas that he himself had never reached out before in terms of economic activity and development. I don't believe Harold Washington tapped anybody for this job. I firmly believe that Harold Washington wanted to do better than Mayor Daley. And he was the type of political person that if he were, God forbid, to go and he did, he'd want everybody to fight it out, to find out who was the best. There was no inside track here. There was no favorite person. In fact, if you wanna look at it rather ironically, one of the candidates wasn't even endorsed by him for reelection and yet came into the fold in a, in an important position. And yet the other candidate was the very first person in terms of political life to endorse him. So I don't, I don't see the argument there. I think the difficulty about this decision is the fact that we are choosing one of our own. And in the process of choosing a member of the city council, we probably know the members of the city council better than the public. Better than the public, we know each one of them personally. We've watched them perform. Now, I don't say to you that's the best system. If you don't like that system, if an alderman shouldn't be elected or we should have an election, that should all be changed by statute. But we have to ride with the system the way it is. And we had trouble, by the way, in the last time this happened with the death of Mayor Daley and the succession, and Alderman Frost and Alderman Blandic in that election. That was a difficult one too. And we rolled that one through. Now, if anybody wants to tell me that I don't know Alderman Evans and I don't know Alderman Sawyer, then, I'm sorry, they're wrong. I know both of them. I've been with Alderman Sawyer since '71. I was elected in '71 with Alderman Sawyer. And I know Alderman Evans, who came into office in '73. And I've had a pretty good opportunity to watch both of them perform. And I'm gonna tell you this, no one should cast any dispersions on any of them. You know, if you mean deal, the ability to keep one's word, then that's a deal. To keep one's word, I vote a certain way, I tell you that way and you make a coalition and you abide by your word, that's a deal. Why, that's been with us in political life since politics began. And if you talk about wheeling and dealing, I like to ask everybody, what has really interfered with the process except something called the Open Meetings Act where we're not even allowed to exercise free speech and association to deliberate in a private way so we can search our consciences without setting up some kind of a gizmo? And let me tell you this, the General Assembly realized that because they exempted themselves from the Open Meetings Act. They're not subject to the Open Meetings Act, the General Assembly. They can meet in private in any number that they want. And that's why they're able to put caucuses together without any difficulty down in Springfield. And I got news for you, some of the most terrific political stories come from Springfield. Yes, siree. Yes, siree. You talk about politics down in Cairo, Illinois, that's politics. In Springfield, that's politics. I think both candidates have the highest degree of honesty and integrity and ability. But I support Alderman Sawyer for a very good reason. I'll tell you what it is. It's affability and communication. Who do I feel that I can relate to the best? Who can I communicate on behalf of the people of my ward the best? And I say Eugene Sawyer. Now, if anybody doesn't believe that the ability to communicate with the top political executive of this city isn't important, then they don't know politics and they don't know government. There is a certain aloofness that we can't handle and we can't have. And that has been present. And I don't mean it in a derogatory way, I mean it in a corrective way. I have difficulty sometimes communicating with the other candidate. Now, I say this in all due candor. We have to find space and room and levels of ability for both these people. They're invaluable to this system. They're both hard-working government officials, both of them. Both of them. Now, I have early committed myself to the proposition that there must be a black mayor in the city of Chicago. That is why I didn't meet with any of the coalitions. I didn't meet with any of the caucuses. I wanted to see the nomination of a black candidate for mayor of the city of Chicago. I believe it's essential for the security of the city. I believe it's essential for the integrity of the city and the city's well-being. And now we have a choice. But for us to castigate the two candidates, I think we do this public a disservice. That's what we do. We do this public a disservice. And for one faction, because quite frankly, I'll tell you what I've always believed. When you know you're losing, you grasp for straws and you start calling names. And you get rough and you get tough, when you know you're losing. When you know you have the votes and you know you're a winner, you don't have to resort to those kinds of tactics. And that's what's probably happening here today. That's exactly what's been happening here today. I think, I think, in all due candor, that Tim Evans is a great leader. But I think Gene Evans should, I mean, I think Gene Sawyer. I think Gene- We make mistakes in our language. I believe that Eugene Sawyer should be mayor of the city of Chicago because he can put the entire package together and I think he can unify the city council so that we're not divided. I second the nomination of Eugene Sawyer for mayor of the city of Chicago. Thank you.
Alderman Schiller is recognized. Alderman Schiller.
Thank you, Mr. President. The 50 aldermen of the city council have a choice. They can elect the next mayor of the city of Chicago from their own individual point of view or they can elect the next mayor of the city of Chicago from the point of view of the 650,000 people that elected Harold Washington and elected his plan. Throughout the day today and certainly throughout the last several days, there has been a great deal of discussion about the legacy of Mayor Harold Washington. One of the comments that I heard actually repeated a number of times and I found to be somewhat ironic, especially in the context of this discussion, was several comments from some of the TV commentators, commentators, thank you, who said that in fact, maybe, they had been wrong. And that in fact, truly, one of the greatest legacies that our departed mayor left for us was his courage and determination to stand by the plan that he ran on in 1983 in the face of a majority city council that was determined to obstruct him at every turn. He was criticized at that time for many of the things that people have said today. The supporters of Alderman Evans are acting like, it almost sounds identical. I remember the same thing, he's bullish, he's stubborn, he's calling names, he's losing the fight and so therefore he's getting dirty. Come on. That was not a legacy that we were supposed to admit, was criticisms that we were supposed to admit that were wrong so that we could now lay them to rest. This man had a tremendous courage that he took upon himself. And he took upon that courage in a way that it's now our responsibility to do the same. I rise today to support the candidacy of Tim Evans because when Harold Washington was elected, he was elected as a result of hundreds of thousands of people in the city saying, "Look, this is enough. We have serious, serious problems that have to be solved." We have gone through years of not having things work in the city that was supposed to work. I don't know if you recall, but you know, I found it somewhat ironic when Alderman Langford talked about the divisiveness and the fighting in the city council in the first three years of the mayor's administration as though those were the Dark Ages. That was the coming out of the Dark Ages. We had gone through a period- We had gone through a period of time in the city where not only was it virtually impossible for an ordinary citizen, whether they were black, white, Latino, Asian, pink, purple, green, blue, brown, or red, to be able to go direct and get any kind of services or make a phone call and expect it to be answered unless they did call the ward boss of the ward in which they lived. But when we went through a period of time where there was an excessive amount of police brutality, a serious problem in the schools that is nothing compared to the kinds of problems we've recently been talked about but which still have to be solved. Through a period of time in the Chicago Housing Authority where the tenants themselves had absolutely no representation on that board and had no ability whatsoever to have anything to say about what was going on and no hope for the future. There was no hope in the schools, there was no hope in public housing, there was little hope in private- there was little hope in private housing, there were fires burning children up as a result of arson profit schemes. We had serious problems in the city. And that Mayor Washington represented a hope and a vision for the future that was realized in his first election and came to further fruition in his second is not something that we can now lay to rest. It is something that we need to remember. Because not only did it represent a hope, it represented a very, very, very deep feeling among the people of the city of Chicago, and especially among those people who elected him. Among the over 650,000 people who said, "We want this plan, this program, this vision to continue in the administration of the government of the city of Chicago." This is not a question of personalities. This is a question of program. When Harold Washington became mayor in 1983, there was a scramble. There was a scramble for power that was an attempt to obstruct his ability to be able to carry out that program. In spite of that obstruction, he was able to do so. In nineteen, for the most part. And he had some things that were stopped and were obstructed. And in 1987, he was re-elected, and the city council was elected for which he could count on 26 votes, which is a majority. He had 26 votes, and therefore it was to the advantage of many other members of this council to join him in his majority because by doing so, they were no longer antagonistic in terms of questions that came before the council and therefore, from their point of view, it made life a little easier. So in many ways, one of the most important legacies that we cannot forget was the legacy of the mayor's determination and courage to be able to stand by the people who elected him and ensure that his program for reform became a part of an administration that was long-lasting. The problem we face here today, because you know, there are deals and there are deals. But when you rush into something, when you do a lot of scrambling behind closed doors, and then when you make an allegiance with the very people that truly, for so many years, were part of an obstruction. And you have so, I mean, there's 20 people here who voted consistently, who were in the council, voted consistently with the 29, who today have consistently voted clearly on the side that is part of the vote, which will be going for Eugene Sawyer. When you have, when you have that kind of an appearance in the midst of the kind of emotion that people feel for someone that they felt so close to, when you have the kind of emotion we have and commitment to what people want to see proceed and go forward in terms of the program and administration, in his administration that he represented, you're really, it's just really unnecessary. It's creating unnecessary problems, and it has to be questioned. It has to be questioned. It has to be challenged. It's our responsibility to challenge it. It's the only way that we can truly be responsible here today. Because it's important that people understand what is happening here. It's important that they know how people stood. It's important that it be reiterated what Harold Washington consistently lived. We can all redefine, we can all put our interpretations into what love means, into what hate means, into what commitment means, and so on and so forth. But there are facts here, and people know them, they're not going to forget them. We've all lived in this city a long time. We've had many experiences, and people feel strongly. If you try to deny the people, the feelings that people have, and you try and turn them around and act like people are stupid or a mob, they'll act that way. And we cannot afford that in this city council, in this city at all. We have to be responsible here. People of this city are not gonna go back. And there may be some members of the city council who think that maybe they will, and time will tell, but I don't believe so. The emotion is not only strong, but people have learned a great deal. Harold Washington was not only my teacher, he was the teacher of many, many people within this city. Let me just repeat one thing I said earlier this morning. We need reconstruction in the city. We really need reconstruction, and only through reconstruction can we get to reconciliation. We cannot afford, we cannot afford to go backwards. We need to ensure the greatest potential to realize, to realize the ability of the administration of the next mayor of the city to be able to carry forward the program reform that was fought so hard for by our late mayor. It is, we have to, we have to ensure, we have to ensure that the potential, the greatest potential to realize that reform program exists in the next administration. If we don't, we'll just have to make sure it's in the next one after that. But we have to ensure it to the best of our ability because that truly, that, that is the standard by which we can judge if we carry on Mayor Washington's legacy. And we can only do so based on the principles he lived his life by. And they did not include making a deal with the people that obstructed him consistently to change, that is not the coalition he talked about. The coalition he talked about was the coalition of inclusiveness, not exclusiveness, from the point of view of the majority, of the overwhelming majority of people in the city, people throughout the city. To be able to create an open, representative government that people could freely feel that they could come in and participate in. And we need to protect those gains. I truly feel, in terms of realizing that potential, that we have to look at the plan, not the man, as we said when we first elected our mayor, Harold Washington. You know, what is true today may not be true tomorrow. We learn that. We learn that the hard way this last week.
Can you bring your...
And what is true today may not be true tomorrow, and our only ability to be able to defend the kinds of gains we've made in this reform movement over the last several years is to hold firm to the plan. Our best way to do that, I believe, tonight is to vote for the election of Alderman Timothy Evans.
Alderman Streeter is recognized. Alderman Streeter.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Streeter is recognized. Alderman Streeter is recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the city council. What a difference that they make. What a difference a week makes. Just a week ago, we were here, harmony, unity. One city council. A great mayor leading us for the first time in six years, five years, we were together. One week before that, we had brought together a coalition of folks all across this city to set the process in motion by which we could elect a democratic president under our great fallen leader. Just two weeks later, here we are. Friends, colleagues pitted against each other. Boy, what a difference that they make. We have two people here today. Both are friends of mine. You just cannot separate two friends in one day. But I can, however, separate my friends from my politics. And this is what it's all about. You have to make a decision here. A decision based upon what you believe in, what your goals are in life, what Mayor Washington stood for, and down which path I must travel. And we've heard many speeches here tonight. And we've heard every story you can think of being told here. Some are accurate, some are rhetoric, some are castigation. And it all divides us as we travel down that road, hoping for unity and hoping to keep the principles that Mayor Washington lived for and died for alive. And that is keeping our streets repaired as he had hoped we would. New sidewalks where there were no sidewalks. New housing in the areas where people felt there were no hope. And giving young boys and girls in this city, across this city, courage and hope that somebody do care. And that we have a city council that looks after its own. I would hope, once we leave here this night, that somehow we can forget about the 1983, and somehow I think we're heading down that particular path, Mr. President. But the city cannot afford to do that. I think that my colleagues, and I know most of them quite well, and we've been breaking bread and drinking coffee together for a great long time. But what has happened to us to bring about this division? We have to find some way to let the citizens of this city know that we do care about them. We're gonna have to leave here tonight, and I hope that we will select the right person, a person the people have spoken for. And I think, and I feel this is what this city is all about. And because of that particular reason, I have no choice but to separate my friendship from my politics and place a nomination for the next mayor of the city, Alderman Timothy Evans.
A suggestion has been made, a suggestion has been made to try and, if we could all limit ourselves to five minutes. There clearly is not an agreement on that. Next, I believe, was Garcia, then Tillman. Okay, Alderman Tillman, then Alderman Garcia.
I can't take this no longer. You know, I remember Mayor Washington say, "My name ain't Monty Hall, and this ain't let's make a deal." Y'all remember that? Kind of sickness sitting up in here today. But first, let me go back to the day that my mayor was wheeled out of this city council. There were some, I must say, the death of Mayor Washington affected me in such a way. There's only three men in my life who died, I know that affected me like that. That was my father, Dr. King, and Mayor Harold Washington. I was sitting in my office doing an interview, and I got a call that my mayor was being rushed to the hospital. Now, I never even thought about getting in my car and coming downtown and going in a room playing Monty Hall. I got in my car, and I went to the hospital, and I stayed around that door, and I prayed. I prayed. It never occurred to me to come to city council and go in a room and make a deal. Now, maybe you can say, Dorothy Tillman, you're naive and you don't belong in politics, but it's all right with me. At that time, the vultures, while Mayor Washington was dying, we was looking at the resurrection of the 29. The sad thing about it all is I look at this, and I look around the room, and I say to my colleagues, "Those of you who have joined forces with the 29, don't do it. Don't do it." Because I know, if it had not been for Harold Washington, some of the same ones who are doing it would not be in office today. I know Harold Washington walked the street. They've always told me that people was intelligent. Some of the people did not even want some of those representatives then, but Harold Washington should do it for me. Now, it bothers me, it bothers me when I know that Alderman Stone said that there was no way in the world that he would vote for me for Alderman of the city of Chicago in the third ward. I remember my colleague Alderman Burke said, before he would vote for me, he would jump out of the window. I remember that. I remember that when I came to this city council, that we had boards and commissioners, and that Mayor Washington could not get through his city council because they did not want this city to function. What make you think they wanted to function now? "My name ain't Monty Hall, and this ain't let's make a deal." It bothers me that just last week, we were 26. Mayor Washington's body, he was not dead, the doctor had not pronounced him dead. But according to some of my colleagues, who was in the room in the meeting when y'all was cutting your deal, when Eddie Vedodyak and Swyveil and Burke was talking about taking back... That one of y'all, one of you, and I'm not gonna call your name. No, 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 uh-uh, no, no, no. Leave me alone, let me finish. At 12:30, the doctor did not pronounce Mayor Washington dead till 1:36. And at 12:30, one of you said, "He's dead." I also heard that one of you said, "Well, he ain't gonna come back." Let me tell you something, Mayor Washington lived. Y'all think this is orchestrated. Those of you who think it's orchestrated don't understand my community. And I'm appealing to the Washington 26. Don't do that. Understand what you're getting ready to do. Some of those same people who gerramanded us and made sure that we didn't have our representation with the ward remount, we are now in the process of drawing up that new map. Don't do that. Mayor Washington put forth before us a budget. He said the city needed it. And I'm willing to bet you that part of the deal is to cut that budget and knock it down. Don't do that. The whole world is watching us. Our bond rating is going down, the first time in a long time our bond rating went up, and you went in the bed, cut a deal with the Dalva. I have some serious problems with that. And I'm pleading, I'm pleading to my colleagues, and I'm talking to the Washington 26. You know, I saw y'all. You know, I saw you, how you would just be around the mayor. "I'm with you, Mr. Mayor." Every time something go off, "Mr. Mayor, I'm with ya, I'm with ya." You weren't with him. His body was not even cold. That bothers me. Somebody said that we around here doing this and doing that, but I have a problem. Yes, Alderman Stone, we was at the pavilion last night. Yes, we were there, we was memorializing our mayor. And we heard that you had disrespected our mayor by calling the council meeting today. So don't put that on me. You did. Y'all did it. You called this meeting. Now, I want the record straight, and I'm not gonna let nobody sit here and try to smooth everything over like we got this and we got that. You know what we got? Watch it. Y'all remember, you remember, we went out in the snow, and we worked our butts off, and we put Jane Byrne in office, and the next day she joined Eva Cabal. You know what happened to this city, but you know what happened to Jane Byrne too, don't you? Let me tell you something, and I, and I wanna talk to my colleagues, and I wanna talk to those of you who standing up like men and women. Maybe I'm not cut out for what you're cut out for, because there are certain principles that's embedded inside my bones, and I want you to understand this. You know, I came from the movement, and I came from Dr. King, and I want all of you who trying to do this, we face Sheriff Clark, and ain't none of y'all tougher than Sheriff Clark and Bull Connor, and I want you to understand that. And I don't, and all the Uncle Toms is out in the community that's encouraging this, we're watching you. We're watching you. Dr. King once said to us, "That a man can't ride your back if it's not bent," and I don't intend to bend my back. And I wanna say to my colleagues, those of you who standing up being men and women, there's gonna be some difficult days ahead, some very difficult days ahead, but we can weather the storm. We can weather that storm. Mayor Washington fought these suckers for four years, we can fight him for 14 months. I don't intend to be, I don't intend to be nice. Some of my colleagues done told me, you know, it's a long night, let's move it on. No, I'm not moving it on. Let me tell you something, do you understand what you're doing today? Don't be caught on the wrong side of history. Don't be caught. You remember when, when Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation? There were some black folks who didn't wanna be free. They didn't understand freedom, Bobby. They went back to the masses and said, "Master, I don't wanna be free." You wanna talk about a plantation? That's how we got put on the plantation. They didn't wanna go back in the man, so that's all right. Come on back in the house and work for me free, and be a good boy, and I'm gonna take care of you. You know, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna let you work for me, and when you get through, I'm gonna have all your money in my pocket. I don't intend to go back on the plantation. We're going forward, and I don't even want the community. I mean, I know, I want you to understand, from a very nonviolent perspective, you don't have to dismay, God is on our side. Because we're doing what's right, and you got to understand that when we decided that we were gonna run Mayor Washington for the mayor of the City of Chicago, there was those who said we could not do it. There was those who did not understand it until the 11th hour, when it was all over with. I've heard people accuse us of orchestrating this. We don't have to. It's our people's movement out here. There is no way the people are gonna let government go back to those backroom deals. Be careful. There are times, sometime, you get caught up and you get wrapped up, my brothers who trying to go back to the plantations, and my sisters. You get wrapped up, and you don't understand you're being used. Don't be used, my brother. Don't be used. Step out. Don't be used by those folks. They using you, they don't care nothing about you. We love you. We love you. Don't be used by them. Just don't be used. You got to understand that there's a time to stand up. There's a time the whole world is watching us. When the time you have people like these Alderman who been getting up talking their praises, Bobby, something is wrong. And I say to Chicago, hold on to your pocketbook. Anytime you get folks in a room that's talking about, yes, we will support you if you get rid of all of the mayor's staff, get rid of all of his programs, something is wrong with that. Yes, sir.
Your time is up, can you please bring your remarks to a close?
Yeah, I'll bring it to a close. Now, let me say, in my closing, remember that some very important things are getting ready to be made here. We are talking about the fact that these same folks who gerramanded blacks and Hispanics out of the last ward remap will be in control again. And I say to you, and I make a plea to my sisters and brothers, and to the 26, don't go back, don't go back. And I plead again to my brother, don't be used. And based off of that, I said we should wrap our arms around Timothy Evans. I support him to show these folks that the 26 live. Thank you so much.
Alderman Garcia is recognized. Alderman Garcia.
Well, you can't even hear the gabble.
Alderman Garcia is recognized. Alderman Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman Garcia.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This morning, Mr. President, we carry a tremendous burden and responsibility, and that is setting the course for this city for the next two years. And in so doing, Mr. President, I think it is clear that your parliamentarian may be drafted into this city council because black people and white people want real representation in this city council. And, Mr. President, we all want good representation. We also want honesty in this city council. Mr. President, today, I humbly, but very proudly announce to the citizens of this city, and those that aren't citizens also, 'cause there are many in my community, but I represent them because we pay taxes. Mr. President, I, I, in honor of our mayor, in honor of decency, I am very proud that the four Latinos in this council will advance the legacy of Harold Washington. We will advance the legacy of Harold Washington. We will not sell out. Yes. We, we will advance that legacy because we decided that we need unity in our community in the spirit of Harold Washington, as a virtue to Harold Washington, as a real tribute to freedom. What troubles me, Mr. President, is that I have heard speeches from the heart, from both sides this evening. The problem, Mr. President, is that they are not sincere, because there are members in this council who have spoken with plastic hearts, not with real hearts. And, Mr. President, it troubles me that this so-called Rainbow Coalition is made up of the architects of illusions. Yes, illusions, phonies. This is not a coalition for progress, and you can walk out if you don't like what I say, but, Mr. President, with no evil and with no hate, Mr. President, I think it's important that we do the right thing this evening. I think it's important to do the right thing because some of these architects have exposed themselves before. Some of these architects who have talked about how great black people are would not invite them into their homes, at least not during daylight hours, Mr. President.
WMAQ TV's coverage of the recent mayoral election comes to Channel 19 Saturday, February the 20th, from 10:30 a.m. to 6 p.m., followed at 6 with a live media review hosted by Channel 5's Dick Kay. Tune in for this historic event brought to you by the Chicago Bar Association in cooperation with the Chicago Access Corporation.
Mr. President, I believe that the gentleman from the 6th ward is a fine gentleman. The problem is that over the last few days, he's changed his mind about 10 times. He doesn't know if he wants to be mayor. I cannot support someone who doesn't know how we're going to lead this city. I cannot, Mr. Mayor. I cannot see how this coalition, this new majority, composed of people who oppose affirmative action, who like Reaganomics and devastation in our city, who oppose the ward remap that gave our community a voice, that gave people all over this city a voice, that gave black people and white people and brown people and Asians and Indians a real voice in the city council, how they can unite with these forces. Mr. President, I rise proudly to second the nomination of the gentleman and my colleague and the fighter from the 4th ward, Mr. Timothy Evans. Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen, I rise, I rise, Mr. President, because, because it's important, Mr. President, to be practical tonight, very practical, not by selling out cheaply or expensively, but because, Mr. President, I know that the leader from the 4th ward is electable in 1989, Mr. President. Yes, that is why, Mr. President. Not only, one other thing that troubles me, Mr. President, is that some individuals in this body who, when the mayor was alive last week, only dared to whisper criticisms of his administration, today are hollering and insulting his memory and his leadership and his work because he didn't do it when he was alive. Mr. President, Mr. President, I also have reservations in supporting a man who only last week was criticizing something that the mayor was very fond of, and that was the creation, the establishment, and the fine work that the mayor's commission on Latino Affairs has done for this city, Mr. Mayor. The mayor could take criticism that came from the government if it was to advance the interests of our community, Mr. Mayor. Mr. President, in closing, I'm saddened, deeply saddened, and I don't speak in anger. I believe that I speak with righteousness, and I'm not religious, but I'm a man of high ideals from the smallest ward in the City of Chicago. But with Harold Washington, I was an equal partner in this body, and I will continue to fight for that, Mr. President. Excuse, excuse me if I abuse of the time privilege, Mr. President, locally, 1988 may not be so great, but I know one thing, Mr. President, with Mayor Evans, things will be fine in 1989. Hasta la victoria!
Alderman Shaw is recognized.
Well, Mayor Orr has admonished the crowd a number of times. He really could have the gallery cleared if he wanted to.
Mr. President.
I see Alderman Caldwell, Alderman Shaw.
And members of, and members of the city council. I had not intended to speak here today, but certainly...
Audience, will you please refrain from making comments? Alderman Shaw has the floor.
Certainly, after hearing many of the comments, listening to the telephones today, almost 5,000 people, we contacted, either we called them that live in the 9th ward or they called our office. And the, the results was 3,041 for Eugene Sawyer, 1,911, 1,911 for Alderman Evans. I don't know, I don't know what the situation is, but I know...
The Chicago Bar Association and the Chicago Access Corporation are pleased to bring you this special cablecast of the recent mayoral election, courtesy of WMAQ TV. Stay tuned to Channel 19 for the Election Media Review, a live program that will follow this cablecast at 6 p.m.
We have been more tolerant with people applauding on all sides. We do not want to have any comments, any negative comments, any interruption of the speakers. We're almost through with our speakers, please let us continue. Alderman Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. President. I afford everyone courtesy. But last night, I talked with people in my ward till 4:30 this morning. From 12:30, they was calling my home. I talked with the lady Ruby Reese about 11 o'clock. My neighbor lived down the street, she had some concerns. I talked with her about an hour. Frida Jordan, this morning, I talked with her, explained the situation, then talked to her about two fine gentlemen that I've known for some time. Alderman Evans and I are members of the same church, and I've said that many, many times. And I've, I've known him for several years. Alderman Sawyer and I worked together, both in the water department and here as a member of the Chicago City Council. And I didn't get up here to criticize Alderman Evans. I got, I'm up here to speak about a person that I think will represent the high ideals and the programs that Mayor Washington represented in the city. I think those programs were people programs. I think they offered hope. I've heard many allegations concerning the direction we are going. The people of this city, and particularly black people of this city, are not, no longer on their knees. They stood up in 1983 because of Mayor Washington. He liberated black people. I agree with that, and he should, and it's, was the right thing to do, and I support that, and for as long as I live, I will support those kinds of principles. On the other hand, we have a fine Alderman from the 6th ward that in my judgment, in the judgment of 3,041 people, said to me today, says, "Alderman Shaw, I'd like me to cast a vote for the gentleman from the 6th ward." When I was elected back in April of this year, I promised the people of my community that I would listen to them. I would listen to them, and that's what I'm doing today. In 19, Mr. President, I did not interrupt these people in the rear here.
You're right, Alderman.
I would like to continue.
Continue, Alderman. Please cooperate.
The, the...
Please cooperate.
Situation, the other concerns are, is that I think within the first 90 days of this administration, you will see the kind of progressive administration, the same kind that Mayor Washington carried on for the five years, almost five years he was our mayor and leader. Never one time in seven months...
Never one time in seven months, as a member of this council under the leadership of Mayor Washington, I did not deviate his programs. And I told the people of my community the other day, when someone asked whether if I were going to vote for the tax increase, and I says I can speak for one of them. I intend to vote for all $84 million in the tax increase, and I still intend to vote for it if it come before this council. I can support it. The people of my community indicated to me that they wanna see Mayor Washington's program promoted and furthered in the city. And I wanna support that and will support it. We have to support those programs. I believe in the leadership of Alderman Sawyer. Some people said, "Well, another candidate was Mayor Washington's candidate." Well, first place, Mayor Washington didn't have no candidate because Mayor Washington told us all, all the time, that he expected to be here 20 years mayor of this city. And he did not have and did not groom any candidate. But the, in the absence of the mayor, he named the presiding officer of this body, Alderman Eugene Sawyer. He put the gavel in his hand. This is the same gentleman. My colleague from the 6th ward had the same job that Alderman Frost had in 1976. And the people of my community felt then that he should have been mayor, and it was a uproar, uprising in the community. But another fellow, the floor leader, got the job in 1976. Today, I believe we would serve the city well, based on the information from my community and what I know about these gentlemen. I just happen to be voting based upon the recommendation from 3,041 people from my community for Eugene Sawyer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Alderman, Alderman Burke is recognized, followed by Bloom and Caldwell. Alderman Burke.
Mr. President, I was going to move to close nominations. It's now going on to 4 o'clock in the morning. However, if, if there are other members who wish to be heard...
Can we, can we just have the remaining speeches be brief, whoever intends to speak? We had Alderman Bloom and Caldwell.
I'll, I'll withhold my motion then until the other two speakers...
Okay, we'll continue. Again, there is a request for brevity. Alderman Bloom has the floor.
I yield Alderman Smith for the opening of my remarks.
Alderman Smith has the floor. Alderman Smith has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will assure this body that I, I will only be just maybe a couple minutes, but I feel that it is extremely necessary, and I want you just to give me a couple minutes here, that I should make a couple points. There are a thorn of people outside. The same number and the same kinds of crowds that we saw as we returned from the funeral and to, and went to the cemetery on yesterday with the mayor, mayor's body, they're out there in the streets now. My, my office today has been completely littered with calls. And in my ward, I don't have E.F. Hudson, but when my people speak, I listen. Now, let me make it perfectly clear. I am here to vote for Tim Evans. Now, that is not to say that I hate Eugene Sawyer, that is not the case. I'm here to vote for Eugene, for, for, for Tim Evans. And I want, in this process, I have to face people, the same people I have to face, every vote that is cast against Tim Evans gonna have to face the same people that I face. Now, it's alright for some of my colleagues to vote against Tim Evans because they don't live where I live. And if I vote against Tim Evans, I just want the record to be clear. If I vote against Tim Evans, when I go home tonight, I am going to be a stranger in my And, Mr. Mayor, I just want you to know that I can't be a stranger at home. And so, I'm casting my vote for Tim Evans. Thank you.
Alderman Bloom is recognized. Alderman Bloom.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm proud to second the nomination of my neighbor, Alderman Tim Evans, to be acting mayor of the city of Chicago. And I had lots I wanted to say, and I'm only gonna extract from what I was thinking of during this long meeting for a few items. I learned a lot...